Everybody knows and then. What we usually have do is the department had runs through the different projects. And the commissioners are able to ask questions if we have any and. Hear what you have to say. So that's what we're here to do is to listen primarily and ask a few questions.
All right, should I start?
Please, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, my name is Joyce, Joyce Liu. I'm the IT director of the City of Newark. So I'm here to present the capital request from the IT department. So our IT capital request is aligned with P O C D code eleven point one B. We should continue to upgrade, update, modernize, maintain, know works, infrastructure and city facilities. And also another P O C D call thirteen point two point eight for. Use data to drive decision making. So that's why we are all the our request is aligned with this to P O C D. Alright, so our capital budget request for next fiscal year is one million, one hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. So it is combined technology request from the following department. Public safety, two hundred twenty four thousand dollars, library, thirty five thousand dollars, public health. Eleven, ten thousand dollars, C T I T and all other departments combining is eight hundred nine thousand dollars. So their total ten item in my capital request. I'm going to quickly go over each item and if at any point and you need further clarification. I'll try my best to answer that and or I'll provide detail supporting document in the email after the meeting.
Okay, great. And please don't think that I'm not looking at you. I'm looking at the report. We might all be looking down at our books because I think it's easier to follow along.
No problem. Thank you for clarified that, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, for for the. For your information, all the item IT requests in capital budget such as a server, laptop, computer, printer, monitors and all the other IT equipment. Are the fixed assets and they all know normally it lasts for three to five years, depends on the usage. So even IT have a repeating request for each year, but those are on the rotation base of the different assets. I just want to let you guys know. Okay, so start with the item one, fire headquarters data storage server upgrade. And that's I'm asking hundred forty five thousand dollars for this. This capital request is to replace the data storage server located in one of our data center. So current server is installed in two thousand eighteen. It's it will reach its five year lifespan. So the new server will have the up to date technology. Which flash storage was much faster response time compared to the older hard drive. And the amount we are requesting also including the server installation and three year maintenance warranty. Number two.
Miss Lou, can I ask a question? This this relates to most of your requests. What happens with the old equipment?
Alright, so when when the old equipment after. Five years later, you know, some of the server is still going to be very powerful to. Put together like putting our backup server room as a backup. So in case, you know, so we never throw away any equipment. When is when the equipment was replaced, the old one we reused could be our lab, you know, a testing environment. Or we can build something as a, you know, data storage as a backup. And we normally use up every single thing before we put it on the, you know, on the recycling bin for, you know, for recycling.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, and number two.
Sorry, number, I just, this is an overall question as well and specific to this. Is this? Are your items listed here, one through eleven in the priority of what your department wants?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then. This says it's just the data storage server for the fire department. So. This this doesn't cross populate with the police department or anything else?
Actually, we have a two, we have a two major a storage. Device, which is one in well locating to data center. So this one will expire two thousand eighteen. Another one will be expired two thousand nineteen. That's why we want to say like e- each year, like, you know, we. When it's going to expire, we're going to do that one year at a time.
Okay, so this is just for the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, and where actually is this piece of equipment?
Oh, this one is right in the fire headquarters data center.
Okay, in the big building on Connecticut Avenue.
Yeah, this data storage is basically the backbone of all the data storage we have for the city hall. Everything resides on.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So that's very important. We need to keep up the know with, you know. Under warranty. The second one, C T Y network infrastructure upgrade. We are asking for four hundred thousand dollars on this one. Our existing existing network infrastructure is more than ten, ten years old. The the current network really cannot handle cities daily operation anymore. So the capital request is to replace the three core switches in our data centers and all the cloud is switched in the seven city locations. And so by replacing the new and updated equipment and it will upgrade the performance of a network and prepare us to handle more data flow in the next ten years. Any question on this item? Alright. Item number three, C T Y G S project. We are asking for hundred fifty thousand dollars for this project. So our last street image, street level image was updated in two thousand eighteen. So since G S technology is now widely used among all city department. We would like to really keep a fixed updating schedule for the street level image. The new street level image will capture approximately like five hundred total miles of a city streets. And with high resolution of a hundred megabyte pixel and high measurement accuracy. So this quote we are asking is also including hosting imagery, unlimited user access. Software with function and tools that allow us to fully utilize the imagery throughout the city. So within this request, there's also, well, G S request. So I combined them together. It's a plenty of zoning department is also looking for a module within the Asri Arc G S. That's the software we currently use. There is a new module called urban city planning. So we are looking, you know, for getting ten license as a starter and create a base lighter map. That we can fully utilize this function and for the planning and zoning committee probably do the downtown. Sono area that they have some kind of software that can help them do the planning for the future. And number four, health, this is for health department is environmental health suffer hundred ten thousand dollars. This project is to replace healthy promise existing health environmental software. The current system is built in, you know, using the legacy software that's no longer support by Microsoft. So I can help department while use this capital request amount to put together a software R P, R F P. For the cost based platform that can do an administration of the. Sanitarium inspection license permit plan review reports and registrations. The amount we are asking for is also including the initial initial data conversion and customization. We are hoping we can find some something to on the on the market can. Really fitting, you know, like gloves, like fitting our hands, but that's normally that's not the case. So we want to leave some room so we can use the money to, you know. On data conversion or some some kind of customization for the software that will feed our needs better.
So I have a question?
Yes.
Hi, okay, so is this only for software? Does it include equipment as well or handheld devices?
Actually, the is currently health department already have. iPads, you know, that actually they have a handful of iPads that help them to do the inspection. So that will be if so, this is just for the software itself.
Just for the software.
Right, right.
Okay.
So the hardware that we are going to, if they are asking for refresh is on the item number. Seven, C T Y desktop technology refresh. So you will find everything from there.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, sorry, my question too. Does this? Particular software, then you're talking about it mentions permits, plan reviews. Is this only used in house or would a resident who say needs to fill out a building department form? And I'm not sure now if they still have to go over and get the paper form at the building department. I haven't been there in like two years. But is this applicable for residents to use to different departments that they can say, okay, here, fill this out online?
Exactly. That's what we are looking for. We want to automate the menu process that we currently have with all the paper. Hoping this new software will have a way to integrate whatever we are having as a paper trail. And integrate into this system. So we, the resident will be able to be utilized the new software of from. Public, public facing module that will be able to fill out information without showing up or pay the, you know, everything. Permits by credit card or something. So that's what we are looking for.
So then at some point in somewhere else on the city website will hopefully accommodate this type of software like the. So the consumer use will be much easier.
Yes, that's what that's our goal, but we only have like very limited resource within IT department. We basically have a one database person then plus the programmer. That person is a database person and programmer. At the same time, and we as much as lots of time, we want to do lots of in-house programming, but we really have a limited resource. So lots of time we rely on the vendor like when we acquire a new software. We kind of, you know, if they have additional functionality functionality like that can allow us to. For probably to to access. Public facing, you know, module that that will be all prefer vendor to choose from.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. A number five. Okay, I just need to point it out. I, if you look at the. The items, the one I putting for the start, you know, number five, seven, eight, nine, ten. If you look at the star, those are continuing refreshing. So you will be seeing that every every, you know, budget season every year.
Okay, was that five, seven, eight, nine and ten?
Five, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Thank you.
Alright, so number five. A refreshing of a mobile data terminal in the patrol car, fifty five thousand dollars. So this project is in conjunction with the PD's capital budget request for purchase of a ten patrol car for next fiscal year. And we asking fifty five thousand dollars. That's just for the hardware. So for. Within the ten cars, any IT equipment for the car, laptop, software, license, in car, mobile printers. So those are because IT in charge of installation, maintain, do the maintenance, it makes sense that we also do the procurement. For that. So that is the project for number five. Number six, audio video upgrade to the conference and meeting room, fifty thousand dollars. This is kind of. On going for the past several years, we try to asking money to install small board for each, you know. For departments and this request is we asking fifty K to procure and install five small board. For the fire station, not the headquarters, just the fire station and the communities. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I just sneezed.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, and community service department. So this meeting equipment are very widely used throughout the city for meeting and training purpose. But we also looking for the meeting recording equipment. So in prepare for in the future or actually near future in in person hybrid zoom meetings recording for the old meeting rooms. And number seven. So from seven to ten, that's a, you know, the. Continuing technology refresh, I'll quickly go quickly go over this. The number seven is a C T Y technology refresh like. Like what I mentioned before, those equipment and any hardware that is coming out from this budget. And so any IT related equipment. But that, you know, they all have like whatever have a three to five year cycle depends on the usage, the condition. And I add a little bit more twenty thousand dollar more on this request because last year we caught off guard. All the hardware is very expensive, like, you know, that whatever we got a quote for. Five thousand dollars, it become like fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollar more. So it's, you know, so I want to add a little bit wiggle room for that. And also just for. The information lots of the. We have a lot of demand for. Staff that require dual monitors. It really enhance the ability of the now, you know, everything's on the computer. So when they are doing handling things like they can drag and drop or they can do, you know, two monitor at the same time. That's kind of, you know, trend for the the city environment. So that's also part of the, you know, technology refresh. As as far as long as the department agree with it or, you know, approve that purchase, we we can try to make it happen for the our staff.
On number ten.
Number ten.
Are those, yeah, the number, the library.
Okay.
Are are those for computers that are used by the public or those for computers used by the staff?
Just the public access. The computer using for staff is under the number seven. So the city why it cover every department, but the number ten, we we single it out because for the public access computer refresh. We total currently for the both library, we have one hundred sixty something public facing computers. If we divide by five years, every year we need to do refresh of thirty of them. So that's the, the, you know, that's why we put together the number, just like, you know, because it's not just for the computer is the. The lap, you know, and self check make, you know, makers space, the microfilm stations, all the others. They are all including in this budget. So we want to make sure we have enough money to, you know, and. Last year, library, both library also have the installed the lap laptop dispenser station. And that is also under our management. So that, you know.
And do you? Okay, do you achieve? Any economy of scale if you combine with the Board of Ed? Or maybe that's not allowed cross pollination, but is any of this applicable to the Board of Ed?
This is. Well, for how where if I honestly, if we can do the buying, combine our buying power together, maybe we can have a cheaper price.
Yeah.
But other than that, then. And lots of time we did, you know, work with board of education if we are, you know, thinking about. Which vendors who go go by and we ask their opinion, we would have a. Continue discussion like, you know, we would probably see each other, you know, once a week or twice a week. Something like that, just we, they will stop by, I will stop at his office, you know, board of education's IT department's office. And we will have, you know, collaboration with lots of other stuff. But as far as a price wise, they got much better. I would love to combine with them, but they have this E rate that and. Just for Microsoft license, I think Microsoft give educational rate is I think it's a quarter of what I'm. Pay, you know, is, yeah, so I would love to combine with, yeah, a buying power if I can tapping any of the resource, but I don't think that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, so that's my, you know, that's all my items I go for the capital request. Any question regarding to any of my?
Uh, just a question about how you established your priorities. You, you, you said it ran from one to ten.
Actually, they are all priorities. They are, but there are certain things like if the storage server fell. Half our data will be half our city data will become. So, you know, then we need to immediately re. Acquire the server, but the 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 thing is, right now, even you place order for the server with a, you know. You probably place order three months later, you will see that the order passing through. So that's become, you know, so that's why I kind of putting the. You know. The most important thing up from, but regular server, we still have some, we can, you know, like lifespan three to five. But sometimes server can stretch into six or seven years, right? But then we have more more of those regular server than the storage server. We are only two and those are very expensive, right? And also the network infrastructure upgrade is if we don't upgrade right now, we are doing that for in, you know, for another ten years. And that's already like. Three or four years overdue for those upgrades. So that's why I kind of put everything as a priority. But, you know, for the top priority, but. Well, if you said, well, you know, if everybody said. Well, our desktop, I my desktop is slow, I need to refresh. I probably can say, well, wait another year, I don't have money. So you see, that's the thing. So prioritize is based on the. Severe of the damage that are caused to the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions? Alright, well then, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Alright, so now we will go to the DPW.
Um, thank you, Candy. So if possible, just wanna suggest. The order based on how many items we have under each division. So this way, the people that have every few items can go first. So if that's okay, I'd like to start with W P C A. And then after move to operations, then building, recreation and parks and. The last one will be engineering. Would that be okay with you?
Yes, sure. Just if if you have the same book that we do, just let us know. What page you're on so that we can follow along appropriately. That's all because we are taking notes. You guys are all there in your conference room. That's nice.
Right, the the tab would be very helpful for me too.
Yeah.
Which which tab out of operations?
I'll flag that down. I'm not sure if they have this because they have just pretty much their budget. So they don't have like everybody's budget. So I will. I will flag that for you though, Jackie. I'll do that right now.
That's helpful.
Thank you.
Are you okay on being the first one?
Yes, I am, Vanessa. Hello, everyone. My name's Ralph.
Let us get to the W P C A page, please. One sec.
Sure.
Thank you, because it's D under.
Right.
Number D, letter D.
Got it.
Alright, hello, everyone. I'm Ralph Kolb. I'm the Senior Environmental Engineer for the Water Pollution Control Authority slash DPW. And we have one item on our capital improvement project that we're requesting. It's ten point eight five million under a collection system rehabilitation.
Good thing you're not asking for two of those.
But we, we have a lot of money that that we're looking to improve the assets of the collection system. In September of two thousand twenty two, we submitted a collection system master plan to the state. This was a plan that we had planned on for several years. And that was submitted and there's multiple recommendations in that plan. Over the next five years, we anticipate spending approximately sixteen point eight million. In collection system projects based on the the master plan identified.
Question, not not about this piece of the capital budget. But what, if anything? Is the department doing to harden the facility? In the event of a major storm?
And let me just confirm this. You're referring to the treatment plant?
Yes.
As we do treatment plant upgrades or modify equipment, we look at the hundred year flood zone. And we plan accordingly. There are, there is a placeholder, as you can see in the budget for twenty five million. In future fiscal years for the treatment plant. Currently, we're we're in the process of preparing a facility plan update for the treatment plant. That we anticipate to be complete by the end of June of this year. And that's going to have multiple recommendations on improvements at the treatment plant. And that is one of the things that we do look at. Is the hundred year flood elevation. We look at future capacity. We're working with the planning and zoning team. To incorporate future developments. And like I said, that will be finalized later this year and we will continue next capital budget season. We're going to. These placeholders will reflect what the recommendations from the study in provide.
I'm no, I'm no expert in these matters. But I know that hundred year storms are coming more frequently. And I'm just wondering if if the department ought to be thinking about planning. Frankly, for a two hundred and fifty year or five hundred year storm to be properly prepared for the future.
I just wanna hold on. Sorry, Ralph. I just wanna clarify that the wastewater equipment plant. Just treat sewer. And so we don't treat drainage water into it. So. So I know that it's very confusing. What happened is that sometimes when we have a major storm. A little bit of this runoff ended up in our collection system. But the main and and that's where sometimes when there is a storm. It's not very good that you ended up going to the beach because it can, some of that water can end up going there. And we have to not be able to treat a hundred percent of all the fluids that goes in. And but when we said for a hundred year storm, we are really considering what will be the runoff caused by a hundred year storm into the sewer system. So theoretically, the drainage do not go there.
Thank you.
I just want to add, if if I said a hundred year storm, I I misspoke. It's a hundred year flood zone that I'm trying to refer to. So we know the site for the hundred year flood zone. We we designed, I think it's three feet above.
Right, and Ralph, at first, thanks for that great tour this summer. It was really enlightening. If with this ten point eight million dollar project. Would you be able to? If if this were, if this is approved. How long would it take to do this two hundred miles of of rehabilitation? You couldn't just, you know, get it done in a year, right?
No, what it is, is it's putting money back into, we have approximately two hundred five miles of collection system. So it's just continue to invest into the assets. There's actually. For the. Over the next five years, the sixteen point eight million I referred to is part from the facility. Sorry, from the collection system master plan is also as identified in a consent order with the state. So there's three projects that we've identified that is a must for the city to complete. So that's what the, the next four years for the fiscal year comprises of sixteen point eight million. That month, that those projects have been basically promised by the city to the state to to complete.
Okay, and so the the ten point eight will cover those three projects?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then and then after that, every year, you're going to just continue on with the two point six million. And you're refreshing underground pipes, basically, relax layman's terms.
Correct. The fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, and then twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven are years with two point six five million. That's part of the original projects that we're doing. Of the sixteen point eight million, the two million in year twenty seven dash twenty eight is for ongoing asset preservation. Continue to invest into our asset. So what we mostly what we try to do is we do cured in place pipelining. So you're taking assets that could be hundred years old that are beyond their useful life. By installing a cured in place pipeliner, you extend the useful life by fifty years or more. Plus, you're reducing infiltration from the ground from getting into the pipes. So it helps provide additional capacity, reduce flow, unnecessary flow to the treatment plant.
Okay, thank you. J J or Darius, do you have any questions? Nothing for me. Okay. Is that it, Ralph?
Thanks, Ralph.
Alright, thank you.
Operations, Brian, I'm not sure about the the tab here.
Yeah, so I think it's, I mean, I guess how the books got set up, there's no like official. Yeah, so I think it's, I mean, I guess how the books got set up, there's no like official page numbers, JJ, but it's on, if you're in the PDF, it's page 52.
I I grabbed the whole operations section and so I have the tabs right in front of me.
Me, too. Yeah, that's why it's so much easier to have this in a notebook than it is to try to find it online.
That's very true.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, Vanessa.
Okay, um, so Chris Boy is here and I'll let him go through it. It's only three items under GPT. Um, so the first thing is the 50,000, $50,000. And those would be for charging stations for electric or electric hybrid vehicles, um, at the operations center. Uh, currently, the city of Norwalk has zero, um, electric charging stations. And, um, we're trying to be progressive and buy electric vehicles, but it's almost like putting the cart before the horse. We have no charging stations. So this is a good start, um, in establishing that progressive approach towards sustainability.
So we don't actually have any electric vehicles, but are they on the, like, have they been ordered for this coming year?
We do have electric vehicles, we have two of them, and we have eight electric hybrid vehicles, just in our department, other departments, others, but we just have no charging stations is is my is the point.
Where do they get charged now?
Um, they're they're gas and electric. And the two electrics are at the garage and they're able to plug in to like a regular 110 outlet.
Oh, okay, so this would be a big like 220 thing or more?
Yeah, this would be like a station, like a gas pump that you pull up and you you put the, what it is. So, um, also, I want to clarify because you're going to see this item throughout other divisions under GPW. And there is a a big push, uh, from the city that we that they want, um, then we start looking to more electrical vehicles as part of our fleet. And for, and that's why you're also going to see now our fleet plan that we're suggesting to get some of, to start replacing some of the vehicles that we have for all electrical vehicles. But besides getting the electrical vehicle, we need to think about the infrastructure to be able to charge them. So that's why what we did, we we're spreading the requests under each division. And we're considering about two chargers for each one. So under operations would be 50,000, probably, hopefully, we'll offer the cost of two charging stations. Remember, we need to bring power, we need to do some, uh, digging, we have to bring, uh, all the infrastructure to it. Sometimes we do not even have enough power and we need to add a transmission or a transformer to be able to provide that. And so you're going to see that, uh, operations, you're going to see under building because we want to add two here at City Hall where we have a lot of vehicles that are that we use. And also, uh, another item under wrecks and parks for the same purpose. So throughout we are doing on each division so we can hopefully add six charging stations in this coming year uh, to be able to start ordering our electrical vehicles.
Um, where where will these charging stations be located?
Uh, so this one in particular, under operations, at the operations center. Uh, for building would be at City Hall and for wrecks and parks, uh, we haven't defined yet. In one of, it will be in one of their parts, probably. But we don't have, I know, a location, yeah.
Will this be exclusive for city use or can the public get access?
Uh, probably, we do not know about that yet. I think that we're probably going to start just for city use because we need the, we need to be able to charge our own cars. But we probably going to be able to have them open to the public when the city cars are not used and be charged. Because we already have one at others farm, uh, that we install, uh, late fall or the winter. And then one is open to the public and then they can just use a credit card to to be able to charge the electrical vehicles there. Also, the party do have some electrical chargers in some of their party facility. But but that is not, uh, for the city to use is for residents and users of the party.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, number. Do you guys have the spreadsheet, um, for the fleet replacement 2003, 24 budget in front of you? Um.
Not the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Tell us what tabs.
Start at the top, um, the mat cloud truck.
Yeah, I have it.
Which tab is it under, JJ?
So, um, it's it's still under C2 operations and then just 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 head towards the back. Um, you're going to go past solid waste, you're going to go past, and then fleet management is the next one.
Thank you. Okay, Lou and Darius.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, fleet replacement.
Right.
955, right? Mm hmm. Okay.
I'll take your word for it because I'm not on the same book as you, but we're on the same page.
Okay.
All right, so the first truck is a mat plow truck. Um, we typically ask for one a year and you can see how the price in the last two years has gone up, um, from 265,000 to now 300,000. And that's supply and demand in steel from Canada. So, um, I don't make the prices up and 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 that's what it is. Um, it's replacing a 2006 Ford F650, I'm sorry, wrong truck. Is replacing a 2006 Sterling L85, um, truck 600 with 40,000 miles. Um, now 40,000 miles doesn't sound like a lot, but all of those miles are plowings. No, those trucks typically don't operate unless they're doing a a construction job or during winter. So those are rough miles on those trucks where they start to rot out with salt and the calcium and all of that. Um, so at some point, they become more of a maintenance, uh, liability to the department as as opposed to an asset.
And what, uh, what do you, what do you do with the, uh, the trucks, uh, and cars that are being replaced?
So what we do is we take them out of service and we use them for parts until they're just good enough for scrap metal. And then we scrap them and put the money back into the general fund.
Thank you.
And and how many total plow trucks does the city have?
Um, we have 38 heavy duty plow trucks.
Okay.
And we have 26 plow routes. Um, and we're looking to expand that a little bit, make them a little smaller and be more efficient in our snow plowing operations. Um, so that leaves pretty much 10 heavy duty plow trucks. And we typically have three or four trucks a storm breakdown. So four of those trucks will go back into plow routes. So in all actuality, we really have six. Um, honestly, if you guys would approve it, I would put in for three plow trucks a year. Um, this winter is not a great case for it, but should it have been bad with all this rain, you could imagine what what we go.
So I'm I'm looking at your numbers from last year. Um, and so they match. Wha- what what is the difference? I mean, what is, I mean, it it seems though you asked for the same thing at the same price.
I I'm not seeing the same page.
For for fleet replacement, 995. And that was, that was for replacement. And so this year it is for replacement, the the same amount.
I think, Jackie, maybe the 2024, that's the coming fiscal year, 2024.
2022 dash 2023 I'm looking at. And now I'm looking at, I'm just doing a comparison between last year's ask and this year's.
Last year, we only received 785,000.
So it was cut?
Yeah.
Yes. And that was for three trucks, wasn't it?
So that 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 was for two plow trucks. It was reduced to one. So the original ask last year was for two. And we we had to take one out, so it wasn't.
Okay, I I wrote down three for some reason. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, sorry about that.
No worries.
For any confusion, um, is it okay to move on to the VMS sign?
Eric, anybody else?
Sure.
Um, so the VMS sign, I'm sorry. The the VMS sign, as you guys have noticed, have been utilized more and more throughout the city for not just, um, weather events or DPW, it could be a police event, it could be a special event. Um, and they are instrumental in providing the most information to the public that are driving by that may not have access to the internet or some of the social media outlets that be utilized.
Chris, I apologize, but I'm not sure what you're talking about. What is it?
Oh, it's a variable message sign, number two, VMS sign. We're still on the fleet, Tammy. We're still under, I only went through one of my line items for my fleet capital.
Okay.
So the the second would be $30,000 for your VMS sign.
I see it, okay, sorry, sorry.
That's okay, maybe it's me.
No, it's just the way this is set up. Okay.
All right, I'm sorry.
So, no, 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 you don't need to apologize.
I'll call it out. The next one would be an Elgin sweeper.
Mm hmm.
And then $100,000. And in case you're going to ask the question, um, they do make an electric sweeper that's $800,000 and it sweeps at half the capacity of what the Elgin Pelican sweeper that we currently have parts for. And again, would part out the currents until their current machine, until it was out of service and then we would trade it. Um, the next line item would be a midsize truck freight liner to replace a Sterling, uh, I mean, a 2006, um, 2000 F650, I'm sorry, the 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 truck is 22 years old and it's time. Uh, if if you're wondering why that's a freight liner and not a MAC, our usual chassis, because MAC doesn't make a small chassis. And we recently purchased a small plow truck for a weight and and we want to do that for other clustered areas of the city that have a hard time getting an 11 foot plow truck through. So we're trying to be more efficient in that regard. And honestly, the price is also $110,000 less than the heavy duty truck that that most likely does not fit through that geographical area of the city.
So does this price, is this price only for the the truck itself or does it include all the retrofitting?
It includes all the retrofitting, including lights.
Thank you.
And all of the trucks that we purchase are are pre-rect, pre-fitted before before they come to us. Um, moving down, we have a compressor and our compressors are the, the, the air machines that we use to open up the road when we're doing construction jobs, catch basin repairs, manholes. Um, they're replacing, uh, three and we have one in for the next three years, for the next four years. Um, we currently have three compressors, but we're doing more and more with engineering and collaborating with them. And we're doing more and more construction jobs and it's time to replace our current. Um, and I I get it's 20,000 and that's why I put one in for the next four years. And then lastly, we have, any questions? I'm sorry. Okay, moving forward, lastly, we have a Ford Lightning F150. Um, and that is $111,800. Um, I just want to add to that, that this is showing our initiative to go with electrical vehicles. Uh, we do understand that there is a lot of, uh, council members that want us to start moving towards that direction. And although we always look to try to have the heavy duty trucks, uh, be replaced, the technology is not there. But one opportunity that we saw was to start changing the supervisor's truck to electrical one. And so that's why this year, um, to be aligned with where the city want to go with sustainability, we are proposing change one of the supervisor's pickup truck for electric one.
Guess you can't save the parts on that one, then.
Yeah, maybe in the future. And that's all I have.
Vanessa, are the the trucks that the, um, are electric, are they dual motor or they all electric?
This one will be all electric.
And what, and it's a Ford?
Yes, yes, it is the one that it's the only one that they are, that we feel that it will be enough to handle the work that we are supporting. So bigger than that, none can have the horsepower to handle the work, but this is really more like a pickup truck. That's what it is. The supervisor just carries some tools or very light equipment and but it will be all electric. In in fairness, I also would like to add, just to be transparent, um, if we purchased this truck, it is not available until 2026, but you have to buy it now. We have to place the order because. So so just to hold your spot, you you have to place the order. A similar truck to what we would be replacing, brand new, with all of the lights and bells and whistles is about $48,000 just for your information purposes only.
How are these trucks used, um, in the summer?
Um, these trucks are the foreman's trucks, so they're used every day and they're on call. Um, once every third week, our foremen are on call and they take their vehicles home to to respond to calls faster. So there, these are the the supervisor's trucks. They're not used by the, um, general men, rank and file of Public Works Operations.
So so they're in operations all year?
Yes. All year, pretty much every day. Yes, like almost like a police car, they are operated every day, all day.
Thank you for that.
Darlene, correct.
Okay. So that that is with leads, so our last item under operations, it is under solid waste. And so now you guys have another, it it should be just in a separate page. Okay, so, um, this is a project that we've been piecemealing together over the last few years. And it's a $400,000 project that we need $100,000 to complete. And it's our scale at the Public Works Operations Center. Um, when we did our, um, our upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant, our site sunk almost a foot. Um, and we need to replace our fuel, um, island that I'm sure building will have that coming up when when they go to present. But right now, we just need this $100,000. Uh, we also saved $90,000 by not replacing the door on our salt shed, which was approved last year for 90,000 bucks. So at the end of the day, I'm asking for 100, but it's really 10, just to get this project in the books. And then we can set it and forget it like George Form.
What sunk a foot?
The site, the whole site, like our our site, because it's so close to the, I'm not like the engineers explain that better.
It was just because there's like water and erosion there?
Um, Ralph? No, it was like, after the 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 site was built, it settled. It was just some sediment on the terrain, Tammy, that happened. And you know, but the scale is on the ground, so that's why they have now two. But this has many, many years, so now it's about time to replace the scale. So a layperson might have to put the foundation in for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, they suck all of the water out of the ground to to put the pilings in, the puddings in. That's some our site foot, so it's like a sponge. So picture sucking all the water out of the sponge, it's going to get tighter and tighter and tighter.
Got it, because you're down over there on the edge of the river, so that's to be expected. Okay, so that's, that's the last one, this truck scale replacement, right?
Thank you, thank you for your time. So that's all for operations. I guess, any more questions for Chris?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, uh, thank you guys. So the next one that we would like to go over is building maintenance. So I have Neil here with us. Um, Brian, I don't know about the tab.
Okay, it's C4, building maintenance, building management, right, Brian? Is that?
That's correct, right.
City Hall repairs and improvements, starting at the top?
I've got it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Neil Rennie, property manager for the city. Uh, I'm going to start with our first, uh, our first building. Everything's pretty much broken out, uh, by buildings. Uh, the first, uh, up is City Hall, uh, repairs, improvements. We have, uh, the repair replacement of the terrace in front of City Hall. We're looking for an additional $105,000. And we're also looking for the $50,000 for the electric vehicle, uh, charging stations. Any questions on that line item?
Um, just a quick question on the terrace replacement.
Yes.
I go to the Norwalk Symphony Concerts, but nobody ever. I go to the Norwalk uh, Symphony Concerts, but nobody ever goes out those doors. Uh, and there are, do we ever use it? And if we don't, why not? And if we're gonna spend all this money?
Well, it's it's a me, the problem is it's a means of egress. So when we have a full house there, we need to be able to exit people out there and it's getting to a point where it's deteriorating and it's unsafe. And so we need to do something. There's two stairs, two uh, egress staircases on either side and also the main terrace. You know, main terrace is used for the holiday, around the holidays, they use it for the tree lighting, they use it for the uh, menorah lighting, um, and other other events out there.
Okay, so people can actually go out that way?
Absolutely, and 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 by code, we have to keep that accessible.
Sure, I've never found it open, that's all. I think it would be nice to use it because it's actually very pretty.
It's very, it's very nice.
Side, but if people walk, you know, it would be nice. Thank you.
Any questions on that, on City Hall? Next line, next line item is Roosevelt Center, Senior Center. Uh, we're looking to replace the roof above the gym. Uh, we had a request out there last year, we did not get funding, we're looking for funding in this year uh, for five hundred and thirty-five thousand, ten thousand of that is for uh, design and the other five hundred and twenty-five thousand to replace the roof.
Wow, you you didn't get any funding for that?
We did not, no.
I I find it, I mean, like a half a million dollars to just force the tar down. It seems astronomical. You showed as a new project.
I know it's, I I I see that it's showing as a news, new project, I'm not sure why that is. Uh, but we put out, we asked last year, I forget what the fund amount was for the year before.
It doesn't get funded, we do not get a number assigned. So then the next year shows up in the system, it's still as new.
Gotcha.
So although it is shown as new, he may have requested years before, but if we don't get any fund allocated to that, an account is not created to that pro, to that project. So that's why it continues to be shown as new.
And Neil, Neil, that's the area that covers uh, the gymnasium?
Yeah, so it's weird, uh, I I I'll refer to it as meals on wheels or where the seniors get their uh, there's classroom A, classroom B. And then you have the the gym area, the boxing uh, area. Um, the roof is probably thirty-plus years.
So it threatens pickleball.
It it's.
We can't have that.
You can't have that. Uh, and and it's leaking, we we made some makeshift patches over the, like probably two months ago. Uh, because we had a considerable amount of water coming into the gym area, we got that to stop, but it's it's in pretty, pretty bad shape.
So your projection last year was different?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's, well, billing products have gone up substantially.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Jackie, your last year's book open?
I'm sorry, was that?
Yeah, I was asking Jackie, so what was it last year? Yeah, okay, so I'm looking at your lineup and I see here, I'm sorry, I'm almost lost my place, Roosevelt Center.
I think it was about a hundred thousand.
Yeah, no, you had, last year was four hundred and sixty thousand. Okay, okay, this year's ask is six hundred and thirty-five, five.
And just like.
That's a, that's a big jump, is is that just in inflationary cost?
Yeah, so we we had pricing uh, from uh, so we we usually go and get two prices, three prices, just as a, to give us an idea of what we need to uh, to to budget for and it it's gone up, um, like you said, uh, I think, let me see if I have last year's, yeah, it was four. Three now, I had, I, because there's also facade work on that that we're looking to do, there's some uh, some concrete and some brickwork that we need to do around the facility that's becoming unsafe. Um, so last year, the price that we had for uh, was three ninety and we're looking to do some facade work. This year, it went up from three ninety to four sixty-eight.
So is this a six twenty-five is all of the whole project, right? It's not just the roof? It, so is this just for the exterior?
Uh, so it's the roof and exterior. If 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 you were to walk the uh, site over there, you'll see there's some lentil work that needs, that leads to the back of the building that needs to work. Um, there's some concrete spalling around the uh, facility and we like to freshen that up at the same time that we're doing the roof.
Okay, thank you. And is there a nursery school in that building now too?
Or it's like. There's the early child, uh, childcare on the other end.
Right.
But not it, not, not, not within the senior, senior center.
They're divided, but does the roof, I mean, the roof covers the whole building, right?
So so actually, the roof has been done in sections over the years as some renovations have been done. And this is the last, last section that was not done.
And you put these out to bid, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, you get multiple offers, multiple?
We do, I mean, typically roofing, we do pretty well, uh, we we typically, I would say, get five, at least five prices, six prices.
So I just made a notation next to it, then no funding was received last year.
Thank you.
And I just want to add that, and you know, unfortunately, that this is one of the issues that we're seeing all over the board, the cost of material has increased a lot. Plus, there are so many projects going on that, you know, uh, it's even hard to get people to work on and this is driving the prices higher. Uh, so sometimes we we are, we didn't get funded for certain projects uh, last year, this particularly under uh, building maintenance. And then we are coming back now with a much higher number uh, because of that. So I just want that you guys take that in consideration, particularly like with roof and that kind of thing that is uh, we use a lot of oil-based material on that. Uh, we do not know how those prices will also gonna continue uh, going up. So when you make your decisions, uh, please keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Um, next line on, line is Ben Franklin uh, Center. Uh, we're looking to do boiler replacement over there. We just had to do an emergency replacement over the last two months. Uh, the boilers are like fifteen years old, they were the original uh, concept of cond, condensate boilers. Um, we've had a, not a lot of issues, but we've had some issues. And we're looking to do a replacement of the two remaining uh, boilers.
Replacement or repair?
Replacement, it, they, actually, the repair costs about the same as the uh, new boiler. The the heat exchangers are uh, are leaking by, they've been replaced once before. The newer product uh, is is improved uh, from the material as well as the uh, from an efficiency, energy efficiency standpoint.
Right, so the unit that you're going to replace it with is is one hundred percent energy efficient?
Correct, yep, yep. So late, it's the latest and greatest out there, yep, absolutely.
Thank you, and these are oil burners?
This is uh, these are our gas, gas, uh, natural gas.
Oh, they are. Did you receive anything last year?
Uh, we did not, we, this was, this was a new, new uh, project for us. Uh, because we did experience a failure just as we were coming online for this season. So we we just received money to replace one of them to keep us, we can operate on like two boilers, we want the, you know, under uh, design degree days, um, but we we're looking to replace all three, so we have enough redundancy over there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, next up building is Nathaniel Ealy.
I'm sorry, just go back, so you didn't ask for the ninety K for the parking lot?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, miss, I want that, want that parking lot. Um, where, where am I at?
Number three, under Ben Franklin improvements.
It is the lower lot now.
I, yeah, sorry, I didn't, I, for some reason, I I apologize, I didn't highlight that, that's the lower lot. Uh, so the upper lot, we're looking to do this spring, um, this, the, these properties and the lot hasn't been done in many, many years. Uh, as you know, we have a tremendous amount of children programs going on over there. We also have Crystal Theater and there's a lower lot that's kind of an overflow lot that we'd like to uh, have done.
Is, is this done uh, as a single project?
No.
Uh, would it, might it include, for example, when you go out to bid, uh, the the paving work you want to do on Silver at uh, the Silver Mine Elementary School and uh, some of the other uh, parking lots that uh, you're contemplating?
Now, so we teamed up with uh, DPW in uh, when you're, when you're bidding out projects for the upper lot, we jumped in on that to uh, try to uh, capture some savings.
Uh, so what we are doing is we have them, uh, because we have a paving program, we have to see again. Unfortunately, the environment is changing now, and so sometimes we add that into our paving program, the lot. Uh, this year, we decided to try to make it as a standalone project. We thought that will be more attractive to the small contractors, knowing that the big ones were very busy. Uh, so that was the approach that we took for the upper lot, that ended up being successful. Uh, so for this one, uh, by the time that we get this money, it would be July. And then uh, we have to see when we're gonna plan to do the project and how is the economy? And how are, how busy are the contractors and we're gonna go one way or the other.
Good to move on to the next, Nathaniel, Nathaniel Ealy. So we, sometime ago, I want to say two, three years, probably two years ago, we received two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which was half, half the money that we we needed, we're looking for the other half uh, to do the heating system and air conditioning system over there. Right now, it's an old antiquated steam system, it's a workhorse, but it's not energy efficient at all. And we're requesting the other half of it so we can put rooftop, high-efficiency rooftop units on there that are both do heating and cooling.
I remember the conversation last year about the replacement Nathaniel Ealing, so none of it took place?
No, no, so we we actually need the full funding, we did the design work. So we're not, we can't just go with half, half the amount of units, right? So we need to do all, all five units on the roof in order to um, to make it work. Any questions?
No, no, thank you.
Next line item is for the public works, uh, we're looking to replace the burner and even though it says boiler replacement, we're looking to do a uh, replace the burner on the unit with something more efficient. Um, it, the unit, the burner itself is over twenty-some years. It's uh, beyond its uh, published life cycle and we're looking to um, make a replacement on that. We're not replacing the whole, whole boiler, just the burner.
And you said Public Works Center, what is that? Sorry, where's?
I, you know, this is.
What?
Where Chris lives.
Where Chris lives?
Operations, this operations is where we have the gas station, the WPCA and the building there. Um, where we have all the operations.
Oh, okay, so all down there on Smith Street?
Smith Street, yes.
Miss, thank you, Chris. Stop.
Any questions? Uh, next line item is various city building repairs. This is uh, capital money that we we typically request every year, we typically use it every year. It's for any on, small unforeseen capital projects that we uh, come across within the year. We use that money uh, to uh, take care of those projects.
Did you deplete your allocation last year?
We, we, we're right there right now, yes, yep.
Did you get to follow them out?
We did. Any questions? The the next line item is for the police department, they're looking to upgrade the men's locker room. And we're looking for two hundred thousand dollars that, right now, the locker room is, they have uh, showers that are very small. Um, they're, the way they were designed, the uh, shower heads shoot outwards. So it it shoots against the curtain, the shower curtain, so we're looking to go down to uh, three, I think, three showers now versus the four showers, make them a little bit larger, a little bit nicer, a changing uh, changing facility within the shower. And then we were also doing the the sinks and all the uh, fixtures.
What, weren't the fixtures changed like two years ago?
Uh, the the shower, in the shower facility, they did not, we may have done some small upgrades on the automation of the uh, you know, for.
Of the dispensary.
For COVID, for COVID. And and we're running, quite frankly, we're running into a lot of problems with the automatic uh, fixtures. Uh, they're battery-operated, um, so there's a lot of maintenance on it. Uh, people that are actually, you know, using the bathroom for more than washing your hands, we had this problem over the uh, fire department, if they're looking to shave or something else at the sinks, it the, the automatic devices don't uh, do not work.
Right, right. And what year was the uh, fire department?
It it's not, it it, I want to say we're at like the fifteen-year mark, so it's not like a a a long time, but it wasn't designed uh, designed uh, to handle, I guess, maybe the amount of uh, police today and the activity that they have. And it and it's getting tired, it's really getting tired, the facility, so we're looking before we get to uh, to that point where it's not usable and where we like to.
You said this was the, the men's room only?
Right now, it's just a men's room.
Women's room doesn't need to be upgraded?
They didn't, they didn't put the request.
Not as hard on it, Jackie. All right, we're gonna see a budget next year for the women's room?
Uh, you know, look, this is really being, this is not driven, this is not driven by our departments, it's driven by the police department. Um, this here was headed by Sue Zaka and and uh, one of the other deputies. Um, so it's coming from, from uh, the the base. And I I guess, again, they probably have a lot more uh, men that are uh, using the facilities versus the uh, the women's room. But but we're sure, I mean, we're open to uh, to taking care of uh, all over there.
So this is just equipment that you're replacing, updating?
So new shower, new shower stalls. Um, and then building out, a part of the shower stall would be also a changing facility within the stall area.
Anything, can anything be recycled or reused?
Uh, I don't believe so, I think it's old, uh, you know, the uh, fiberglass-type product that that was put in there, so we're, we're gonna go with something a little bit hardier, that can uh, last a little bit longer. We don't want to be fifteen years out doing this again. Typically, we'd like to see something like this twenty-five, thirty years out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Our next line item is various building engineering uh, conservation. This is a line item we we put out every year, we use the money, it's for energy conservation. This can come down to anything from LED lighting projects to uh, our building management uh, software uh, schemes that we upgrade, uh, whatever we can do to lower our utility costs. Um, we've been pretty um, diligent at that, we've, over the years, we've seen a considerable amount of uh, uh, deduction in our electric costs, our gas costs. Um, so that, that's where we spend that money every year.
What about being um, more proactive? Um, and uh, a- at least looking into the possibility where it's feasible uh, of um, in, installing solar voltaic uh, or other alternate uh, forms of uh, uh, power uh, that um, also low, over time anyway, uh, lower your energy costs.
So it's something that's always, look, we're always discussing, I sit in the same office with Alan Low. Um, so we're always discussing uh, back and forth, I know with schools, that's a big conversation. Uh, the the solar panels, I know a study was done at City Hall and it, some years ago, and he found that the the uh, roof could not handle the uh, the load of the uh, panels. Now, that may have changed over a period of time, so that's something we're gonna look at in the coming year. Um, but with.
We were, we were actually told that last night and I have no reason uh, to to doubt that the old roof at City Hall uh, can support it, but the city has a lot of buildings. And again, I lapse into schools because you don't really have much to do with that. Uh, but uh, I mean, I I wonder, for example, could the fire department or any of the?
It, the fire department's a really not a, not a great example for something, and the reason I say that, they have small setbacks. And they're, they're not accessible, so we had problems even getting out to the roof areas over there, they're ballasted roofs.
Right.
Um, there's equipment already on the roofs, exhaust, uh, air handling equipment. So really, you know, you really want something that's a little bit uh, robust with a a flat surface. You know, some of the older schools have, but again, we probably run into this, similar problems with loading. But it's something we we're, we're definitely interested in doing. I know the talk of carports, we even looked at City Hall. We we. We, we were waiting for a number to come back for the side parking lot to carport that and put charging stations in. So it's something that's always on our mind. It's just a huge, a huge undertaking, right? Issue with the uh, the carports.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions on that?
Thank you. So branch library? Oh, there's nothing.
I have, I wanna say my next one is for the main library. Um we're looking to upgrade their, their burglar system, their security system. They wanted some additional devices put in there for security as far as uh panic buttons and such. Um this system is antiquated. Uh probably one portion might be from the seventies, the other portion from the eighties. Uh we had multiple, multiple people give us prices to try to salvage what, what we have. It's just, it's just not worth putting money into it, just to, you know, it's, it's too far gone. So we're looking to, to get that completed for them. Uh my next line item is under environmental remediation. That's uh for twenty thousand dollars. We use that for various projects over the year that we go into. Uh an example of that is the literacy program at the main library. Um we have some areas that are, have asbestos, some lead. Um so these are, this is money that we use for abatement projects. Um whether it be floor tiles, whether it be mastic, whether it be uh the library, you have plaster that has a, a mixture of uh lead in asbestos from the painting. So it, it goes to good use every year.
You mentioned literary, a literacy program at the library. How does that connect to the remediation?
Because the whole area, there's a lot, the, the perimeter over there, you have uh lead-based paints on the walls and you have plast, the old plaster ceiling. If we remove a ceiling tile, all the old plaster ceilings, they put a drop ceiling under that. And it's all laying on top of that. So for us to, to work in that area, we have to remediate all that uh from the ceiling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That was my last item.
Okay.
Any questions?
And so overall, what was your total is?
Is two million eighty-five thousand five hundred.
And how would you prioritize this app between all the items?
Just the way, just the way it lays out on, on the uh summary sheet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, yes, thank you.
You have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
On as uh parks, so park maintenance.
Okay.
Sorry, what? Parks and maintenance? Parks and rest? Parks and rest, okay. Recreation and parks is what it's called.
So we're uh Hopefully, you won't, you won't uh be here until midnight.
He's very passionate about what he has.
Anyway, our first one on, on the um assume you guys are there for parks and recreation.
Yep. The first one, he says parks garage repair.
Thank you, Peter. So this is um, um this will be funds for, to do some improvements at T O, one T O Park. I'm ten T O Court. Um we have uh kind of looked over the, the area. We talked about doing some landscaping and, and that kind of thing last night. We also um need to do some uh work inside um electrical, some of the plumbing or um, you know, we'll have uh space for uh staff to come and um, you know, have a little area where um there's water, um uh restrooms. So we'll, we'll be doing uh, we're asking for two hundred fifty, I believe it's two hundred fifty thousand uh to do that work. And so there'll be probably some electricals and plumbing, some um, during long work for me. Uh we need to connect the bottom floor to the top floor as well, and we do the office up there as well. So um that's what this money would be for. And this boost up the, the outer uh area as well.
So this, this is the site that we, we spoke about last night?
Yes.
Didn't you know that they were gonna be coming tonight, Jackie? I'm like, oh. Indeed. I can't hear you too well, Robert. I don't know if um Thank you, appreciate it.
I don't know, Kim, do you have anything to add? Well, uh, Kim, Kim, Kim is here a, as well to, to talk and to, you know, um to, he's, he has more history on some of these things, so uh I know your question's a lot of time, we'll go back to history. And so he's here for that.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to add, you know, our department has a staff, uh plumber, carpenter and electrician. So we're really able to stretch every dollar that you guys give us, because all the work is done in-house. So we're just basically buying material. I mean, it takes us a little bit longer, but we know it's done correctly and to our standards. And like I said, we're, we're able to stretch all the funding that we get.
Yeah, I mean, cause you know, a quarter of a million dollars seems like a big renovation, but I guess it just doesn't go as far as it used to.
Well, just, just to give an example, uh a bay, one of the bay garage doors is fifteen thousand. And that's for just one bay garage door. So things, things add up quickly, you know, when you get involved with commercial buildings.
Okay, thank you. All right, so your next item then is um vehicles?
Yeah, these, these are our vehicle replacements, and, and we do these um as the vehicles um uh become older. And so we're, we're asking uh for this year two hundred eighty-five thousand for our leafback truck and uh also a beach tractor. And also, as we continue to talk about electrifying our fleets, we also are gonna be ordering electric vehicle for our supervisor and um an electrical uh uh charging station. So a, as we, as we, as uh Vanessa said, as we prepare to uh do one more um fleets that are uh electrifying as the technology increases, we need to have the infrastructure to be able to handle those. So this is, this is our startup on that. And, and as Vanessa talked about the um charging stations, there's questions about public um are using charging stations and she uh talked about the one of the photo farms um is one of our parks. And probably in the future, we'll talk about where there may be other locations that are part of public to, to use. Any questions?
If you had to pick which one of those three, the leafback beach tractor or electric vehicle are, is the most important?
I can tell you, um, so we just hired a new electrician. So what I like doing is when I hire, I like to hire a new staff member, like an electrician or a plumber. Um I like them to spec out their vehicle, cause they know what they need, they know what, what works best for them. So right now, we're giving our electrician a regular pickup truck, which, as you know, it's really hard to carry a lot of uh supplies and leave them in the truck uh after the job. So more likely, it'll be in a closed type van for the electrician. So I do know we need electrician vehicle. And just so you're aware, our leafback truck, which is our only truck we use to pick up leaves at the middle of this season, uh the fleet department needed to maintain the vacuum on the front. So when they took the vacuum off to maintain it, the entire truck broke in half. So we, so, so the weight of the leafback on the front of the truck was actually holding the vehicle together. And we weren't aware of that until they took that weight off. So that truck was actually already uh taken off the road and put out to auction. So i- if I had to say, I would say the leafback truck's important as well as the uh electrician vehicle.
And this is just picking up leaves on city property, right? Like the
So we, we mulch, we mulch about seventy-five percent of our, our sites uh with mulching blades on, on the mowers. So the leafback truck is for properties like Bowton Street, uh Meadow Street Park, the really small sites where we can't get a big mulching mower in there. So the guys consolidate the leaves at the piles, they bring the back truck and they suck the leaves up, and then we bring them to the yard, uh debris site on South Smith Street.
And, and totally different than the street, uh streets we were just going by and sucking up leaves?
Correct. I mean, these are, these are pretty big piles of, of leaves um with, you know, like a fourteen inch vacuum hose. And as it puts the leaves into the truck, it shreds them, uh so we can hold quite a bit of leaves, and then we, you know, head to the site and dump them.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I also wanna say our, our request would have probably been more. Um if, if you look at uh twenty, twenty-four uh projections for the last capital a year, we also have uh truck, an F fifty-five and pick up two fifty. And also a large area mower, which we were able actually to secure under uh other grant funds this year. So yeah, it would, it would please me great, a great deal if we don't have to make a choice on any of those three. I think they're all important. Particularly, I think, as Ken said, with just from electrician, we need the um will we uh have to have a part of the truck and vehicle to be, we need the back for leaves. And we also um, you know, we need to start our electrifying our
And then the next one I have is calf pasture.
calf pasture, um this is for, I can't talk a little bit about this, but it's a, you know, a, a, a restroom down there around fifty and they really need a lot of help. Um we need to um quickly replace uh the fixtures, tiles, paint, partitions. Though over the years, we've uh replaced certain fixtures. But um this would be uh our first renovation and, and all those years. So I don't know if Kim wants to speak a little bit more on that.
Ah, and you, you basically covered it. You know, if, if you've been to the main bathroom building at the beach, you know the fixtures and the build themselves are dated. You know, so we're looking to get in there, replace the mirrors, replace the sinks, replace the urinals and toilets, the partitions, as well as the tile and new lighting. So this is a job that our, you know, a plumber would work on actually next, uh next fall, if this is funded, once we close the beach down for the season.
So this doesn't include uh the bathroom at Shady Beach?
Correct. These are the mains at um, at CAF, the women's and the men's.
Thank you.
It seems like you're getting a lot more bang for the buck at the beach. You're, those are huge bathrooms. And we're talking three showers at the police department. I mean, I know we wanna treat the police well, but are we using gold-plated fixtures at the police department? And uh Home Depot special here or what?
This is also our, this is us doing the work. We have, we have a licensed staff plumber.
Oh, but you can't do that at the police department?
This is my licensed staff plumber.
Now, also, there is the whole thing. And they are really uh only staff to Rex and Parks. They are not staff to Mike at the police. It is a little bit different. I know it is, it sounds weird, uh but unfortunately, um we if, they can file a grievance if we ended up putting them to do that type of
Now, it happened, but my plumber has, he has a backlog of about a year and a half worth of work. Um you know, cause he does drinking filings, he does bathroom fixtures, he does heating systems, he's working up at Cranberry now, replacing all individual thermostats on all eighty-five of the radiators. So I mean, having a staff person like that is a home run, because it pays for itself, you know, a hundredfold over the life of the employee.
So besides just working for the division, also they are enough busy that is not that he has spare time to go fix things uh properly.
This includes materials as well, as well as labor?
Um just material. The labor's
Because the staff is yours.
Correct, it's over and under operating budget, yep.
I, I think that's, that's, that's very efficient. That's really great. Too bad that can't be shared, that resource can't be shared across departments.
Hey, eventually, if the city wants to do a plumbing, a plumbing division, you know, hire two or three part, uh you know, plumbers, there's something that could be done. And that's, to be honest with you, that's, that's a step I wanna get to.
Right, or like we add more full-time positions where we'll be able to have people that will be doing that. Uh but as of now, unfortunately, as Ken said, they, there isn't more work than time for the person to finish what he needs to do on a daily basis.
All right, our, our next one is basketball and tennis courts, I believe. So uh annually, we, we, we do ask for um capital to um to uh improve our, our outdoor um athletic courts. And so we're asking for seven hundred seventy-five thousand. Uh this is for uh repaving the surface, uh replacing some of the backboards, uh um lining, uh we also have a tennis and pickleball ball um court that we're, we're gonna be doing. And uh at Woodward uh court, when we just did the new improved uh pickleball courts, we want, we want to also place lining there, so uh and then uh some work in also that uh Nathaniel Ely Court. So this is all what we, we continually do. This is part of our maintenance responsibilities to keep our assets. So our lifecycle um cost, uh our assets are, are more than that, so we continue to do this. This is our routine maintenance uh improvement schedule.
So last year's ask for the athletic field was three hundred fifty thousand? Did you receive your full acts?
Athletic field?
Yeah, for the athletic fields. You said, you said you, you're, you're, you're repairing the tennis court, pickleball.
We, we have two accounts. We have a basketball and tennis court account, and we have an athletic field account.
Okay, two different ones, okay.
Yes.
And can um, the Roten Tennis Pickleball, they have a, there's a tennis court behind
That's gonna be, that's a new, that's a new install. The school actually requested the install of a uh tennis slash pickleball court.
Where's it gonna go?
Um in the back. So if you're looking at Roten School, the back right side, right? When you get back to the school, where they just put that kind of outdoor classroom.
Oh, yeah, cause there's a hill. I mean, it goes
Uh it's before you get to the top, before you get to the slope of the hill.
Okay, thank you. And then um, I, I know a lot of people that play uh pickleball over on the Woodward courts. And wondering why you took the nets away, cause people play pickleball outside all year long. Seriously?
So, yes, okay, so there's, there's a few reasons why.
Actually, actually, me and kids talked about this yesterday, and I tried to convince him, and he, he convinced me that, that it was time to take him down.
Yes, so, so, there's a couple of reasons. Uh number one, we don't maintain the courts throughout the winter. So if we leave a, a net up at Lolo Park and somebody plays and slips on the ice, that's a responsibility and liability to the city. So that's, that's one reason. Uh the second reason, uh you leave the courts up, people tend to uh shovel the courts to play on them. Uh a few years ago, I, I did leave a net up at Lolo Park. We had a, a two-inch snowstorm. Somebody went there with a, a steel shovel and scratched my brand-new epoxy service on, on the top of the court. Um so after that, we take all the nets down. Uh we leave them up to right before Christmas. And then we, we put them back up once kind of the weather stabilizes, end of March, beginning of April. Uh the biggest thing is the liability. You know, we don't, we don't have staff to go around to all these courts, you know, with, we have a little bit of ice in the morning. You know, and, and God forbid, somebody, you know, goes to play and slips, that's a liability to the city.
And so is the city, yeah. Okay, good. I mean, that's what I figured, but I just wanted to ask.
One, one of the things that we will be doing though, and because the weather, you know, the change in weather, it's so radical. Um and, and this, this area is warming up, uh apparently. I don't know if it's gonna go back. But uh one of the things that, that I, I like to look at is with the warming of, of, with, with global warming, whether or not we should look and see whether or not something that was set, like when we uh winterize our, our system, something that was set in nineteen sixty-three. Um you know, our policies or our practices, are they still relevant now? Should we move back a month or two? We, we, we'll, we'll be looking at those kinds of things, but Ken, Ken, Ken is right, and we, we discussed it. And uh right now, we're at a point where we have to follow what we've been doing, but we, we are gonna be looking into that.
I mean, I mean, don't forget, even though it's, it's warmer out now, we had the Christmas Eve, you know, a little bit of ice. So luckily, I had the nets down before that, you know, and, and who knows, if, if, if I was promised a warm winter, then we keep, we keep the nets up, but, but nobody knows.
Okay, thank you. And does a new tennis court take place uh priority, excuse me, over repairing older tennis courts? And that, then you possibly place And that then you possibly place pink pickleball on as well?
I I I would say we maintain what we have first before we build new.
Okay, thank you.
This is uh playground renovations, um and as you you may know. That we've been renovating uh our playgrounds, uh we've been able to do a lot of this with with. And some um uh Department of Economic Development and. Uh but but we continue uh to put in our budget on the annual basis, our annual need for maintenance. Uh of our playgrounds and renovations, trying to keep our playground safe, you know, replacing uh fixtures. Um uh because our children play there, and so this is an annual ask, but it ran around two hundred thousand. Usually asked for, um and that's what we're asking for this year.
And ju- just a notation, uh the site change, it's actually Woodward Avenue Park, it's not Fox Run.
Oh, okay, Woodward Avenue School, I mean, there's no school, just Woodward Avenue. There where the pickleball courts are.
Correct.
Okay. What do you call that park?
Woodward Avenue Park.
You have a new park, okay, sorry. That's a street name, too.
We're we're simple, we're simple.
Ryan Park, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, what, are there any changes at Ryan Park?
Uh Ryan Park is the new park that was just renovated two years ago.
Right.
So that that's a brand-new park, it's on the corner of Day and Raymond.
Right, right.
Yeah, Woodward Avenue's Park is all the way on the end of Woodward Avenue.
Okay.
Before we get to.
I always think about that, Woodward, okay.
Yeah, it's right next to W Mason, WB Mason.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, excuse me, one sec, I just have to let my dog out, I'm sorry, I'll be right back, sorry.
Guys, we're we're on athletic fields now and. And they're requesting fifty thousand dollars, uh and these are kind of minor improvements that we do to our fields. Sometimes to bring in clay and mounds, um 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 doing arcs on fields, you know, um just. Minor things that have to be done at all our uh our baseball fields. And every year, uh it's kind of been a historical, uh our historical budget lacks about fifty thousand dollars.
Can you tell me where Malmquist Field is, please?
At City Hall.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The baseball field at City Hall.
Yep, okay, didn't know it had a name.
No questions, we'll go to uh uh Vets Park. Veterans Park in Rex, a million eight hundred thousand, uh this will um. Add some additional money on for our marina, um um. Our new uh marina reconstruction project.
I'm sorry, Robert, did you say it was reconstruction of the dock?
Yeah, of the marina dock, yeah.
Of the marina, okay.
And and that's uh that's fine.
So we're actually out to design now, um you know, we're working with with DPW Engineering. Uh we have a contractor race engineering on board that's doing a redesign of the city marina side of the docks. Um if you're familiar with the with the the docks on the city marina. Um we've had a lot of issues with them over the years, uh most years were fifty to sixty percent rented because of the issues. The attachment points are are not correct, where the fingers meet the actual main docks, uh they're very narrow, it's almost like walking a plank when you have to walk out to your boat. Uh we have a very insecure uh doorway that leads to the docks, um we have an issue, issues with the electrical and the water. Say again?
Not AJ compliance.
Correct, yep, we have it, we have an issue with the ramps uh going down to the docks, as well as the electrical and the water that's on the docks. So we're going for a a total reconstruction, um we're in design phase now. Uh we're hoping for construction in fall of twenty twenty-three with completion in spring of twenty twenty-four. I think I just saw Dan fall off his chair.
Will any of this money be allocated towards pedestrian footpaths?
Um at at where?
Vets Park.
So what we're doing is uh the footpath that goes along the water, which I'm assuming is what you're talking about. Is washed away now at every high tide, which is why it has yet to be repaired. So we're working with DPW to do a drainage study on the site at Vets Park. So we can figure out how to stop that from happening before we spend money to replace that sidewalk and just have it wash away again. So if you notice, uh a normal high tide now is up above that sidewalk level. So we fixed it once already and it washed away, so now we just left it as gravel. Until we could figure out a permanent fix, otherwise we're throwing, you know, good money after bad.
Needs to be elevated.
I I honestly, the whole, the whole park needs to be elevated.
Extremely hard to to obtain, um that's where uh deep do not allow to the way they feel. Uh within the flood zone, and that's why it's very, very hard to do, one thing that also just shed a little bit to that. Uh we got a grant um in association with aquarium. Um that we're gonna do some um work at the bottom of Vets Park through this grant. And quite of that fund will also gonna be used to improve a little bit that pathway. So uh that will be a grand money, um is we still need to do a design and all that with the money that is coming, but there there is definitely plans. Uh in the future to address.
Okay, thank you.
serious, go ahead.
Uh do we have a timeline pertaining to the drainage study?
No. There is a lot of things that is happening now at Vets Park, um we kind of, so we are waiting to see. Uh there are some major construction that will will have to happen there, going on the next few years. Um also, we are waiting for the Rex and Parks Master Plan to be finalized. Because we believe that we need to understand what will be the right use of that park. So we can uh plan accordingly and what type of drainage we want to do that. What we are planning to accommodate, it is, it will be extremely expensive and hard to do it. Uh due to the flooding conditions that 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 site has, and all the time with all the. Major storms that we are getting with the raise of the sea level, unfortunately, it is a very. It's an area that would need a lot of mitigation, so we don't wanna stand on a study, not knowing exactly what will be the final use of it.
We we should have a draft master plan of our recreation box, uh sometime in May, February, early uh early March. So that will be, that will give us some indication going forward, but that fix at Vets Park is gonna be very, very expensive. And as Dennis said, uh permits also have to be obtained, even if we have the money, so. Uh it it it's, it's gonna be a long process, but our eye is on that ball, I mean, Vets Park is very important to us. And um there's a lot that can be done, but we just have to fix that that issue, and so that our our focus is on it.
So I just want to add one thing about the box, so you guys uh remember when you're considering funding this project. Um the 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 marina really brings revenue to the city. Uh so as of now, uh we are kind of not making as much revenue as we should. Because we are not able to lease all the slips due to the condition, so we are only leasing between fifty to sixty percent. Last year, before the opening, we had to had some um improvements done, so we could open for the season. And that's why we're totally revamping those docks, it's a, it will be all new, um. Okay, because Ken is showing us their house.
Have you guys, have you guys seen this picture? This is standing on the Straffalino Bridge, so that sidewalk that we're. That sidewalk that we're talking about is right about here. So you can, you can see, you know, here's our field over here, here's a roadway coming in. So you can see, you can see our issue.
Yeah, it's crazy.
But when was that photo taken?
This was the last storm, that last high tide storm. Yep.
Yeah. So is Vets Park landfill?
Um we believe that probably it was, uh I think that was then they, when I ninety-five, uh some of the material from I ninety-five. I back and probably was deposited into it, and that is another issue that we have to be careful about it. Because we're afraid of if we excavate that, what we can expose ourselves to, not on a bad way that is radioactive, but you know. Meaning that depending on what type of material we have there is something that will need to mediate. Uh or take somewhere that may make the project even more expensive.
And with this dock reconstruction, do you need to put in new pilings?
No, well, no, we are, actually, yes, we have, yeah, new pilings, new, new. Um we are at at making the two axes will be AJ compliance, more slips. We're gonna also ended up accommodating a few bigger boats. Um because then we know that the threshold for uh fees can be changed. And so we are totally revamping uh the whole marina dock, because we believe that we can. You, this is that definitely something that can be uh much more used by residents and non-residents. But unfortunately, due to the conditions, they are not, and we're expecting this project to cost about um four million dollars as of today. Um so that's why we're making the the request divided in a couple of years.
Also, but this is just the, right, the beginning, and then are those docks um removed in the winter?
No.
No, so. If the city.
No, we're not considering putting bubbles there.
No.
So we use, we use the ice eaters right now, which are the the underwater bubblers. So we have those installed on on our current docks, that we plug in, you know, when temperatures get below fifteen degrees, so that keeps the ice away from. Um from the dock base, which as you know, is the biggest cause of damage for docks over the winter.
But for me, and so the docks only can be not for its winter storage.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Vanessa, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but why don't we do winter storage with, if we have those bubblers?
Uh liability.
Okay. Be nice if we could make some revenue off of it, you know, but.
Uh as of now, we haven't considered maybe when uh in the future, after these docks are completed. As of now, we we don't think that we we could handle the liability and all the insurance related to that, and we do not have. Uh I would say probably exactly the right equipment for it, maybe for the new docks, it's something that we can talk. In the future to do, we're gonna have power to be able to keep a bubble system if needed. But as of now, we don't have uh that as a plan, but can be considered.
In the future.
Okay, thank you.
The next um, the next item is uh the Broad River Baseball Complex. And uh you might know we've um already requested money for this, and we do have money to make out. Costs keep rising, but uh our main problem there is drainage, and now, so we'll need additional money uh for drainage. Um when we actually, we're also working with designers to design the type of field um. That um won't have a lot of um of uh water standing on the on the field, so we may have to even raise. The level of the field, so it's it's a project that we are um, there's a lot of issues that we're trying to solve, but um. We do know that drainage is gonna be a major, a major issue, so we're asking for another million dollar.
Uh is, is there any opportunity there uh or space uh to put in additional parking?
Yeah, so, so they're, they're actually looking at extending the parking area um along the parking area that exists for the fire department. So extend that all the way down to uh Harris Street.
Okay.
And do you already have two million dollars, did you get money for this last year, because I'm sorry, I don't have my last year.
Two point five.
Okay, so it's about a three point five million dollar project, will this be it, or will there be more?
We don't know the answer for that yet, I mean, to be honest.
Okay.
We're waiting because we have a this drainage uh uh part that we need to address, that we have two consultants looking at it. Uh based on that, we have to figure it out, uh also with, we may need to change the material of the field as well. Depending on what this study will tell us, and depending on what we're gonna use, we may have a difference in cost. So as of now, we believe we are very close to the final number, but uh I just wanna leave it open that there is a chance that may not be the final one yet.
And is this, I I it's two baseball fields, right?
Three, it's two right now, it's gonna be made to three.
Yeah, we're trying to be free, and there is also lighting, if we're gonna add lighting or not.
Playground, it's it's a big project.
Right, um yes, been coming for years.
I know.
Um and then what about, is it turf or is it grass?
As of now, it's turf, but we have to see if we're gonna continue as turf depending on the drainage study.
Okay, that, and I'm trusting that you guys keep up with whatever the. Reports, I don't want to say the science, but you know, the information on turf versus grass.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our next item is our tree planting, again, it's part of our ongoing capital maintenance. And so we have fifty thousand dollars, it's kind of a historical budget uh item that we do for. Uh annual planning of 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 our trees. Trying to uh make sure that, well, you know, uh that our trees uh are replaced in that uh place. Uh do replacement of trees for they need to go, so this is just a, it's a, it's annual um. I do not, and uh we want to maintain our our urban canopy as much as possible in our parks. Our next item, you're gonna come up with another, and we have a series of really annual maintenance um. This is where where we have in all our parks and all our parking lots and and areas in the parks. Yearly, because of the weather, because of just wear and tear and and aging, uh we have uh sidewalks and. And uh parking lots that we have to repay and building cracks and repair, so this is the annual capital line.
And so, for example, if the uh Parks and Recs has a property of budding a school. Is that, is this fifty K for the, like, for example, at Rowain Elementary School? The um the lower parking lot, I believe, is Parks and Recs, so that would come out of this budget as opposed to. Something in the Board of Ed.
Yeah, so if uh we just did the sidewalk off of McKinley uh last year, it went from McKinley Avenue to the tennis courts. So that sidewalk was just redone in asphalt uh last year, but yes, that falls under uh parks.
You guys, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have another annual item here, uh it's backstops and fencing, and this is just part of keeping up our. Uh you know, just continuing, updating and modernizing and and maintaining our our um our assets. Um our assets, and so we repair and replace fencing and and backstops every year. So our next item uh is Cranberry, and there we are um. We have a a a playground uh that actually we highlighted in our last year's budget, as coming in twenty twenty-four. And this is renovation of the existing playground, and that's to include uh play equipment and and servicing as well, so.
So is this replacing the play equipment?
It's replacing it, yeah.
Yeah, well, we, we've been finding out, uh typically after fifteen years, it's harder to find parts for the play pieces anymore. Um so once we get to that stage, then we know it's time for replacement.
So this like with the rubberized material?
Uh I'm not sure if we're gonna do the rubberized up at Cranberry, only because it doesn't really fit in, you know, kind of a natural environment of Cranberry Park. So I think we'll stick with the, you know, the chips up at Cranberry.
What's there now?
Uh a smaller, older style playground, there's a swing set, uh and there's a a small play structure by the pavilion.
Right.
Do you have any questions?
Like this one.
Yeah, this is uh.
Do, do you have any um pictures or any visuals that we could see?
Of 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 the playground?
Yeah, what, what, you know, what, what you. Yeah, what, what, you know, what, what your vision is, what do you wanna purchase?
Okay, yeah, we, we can probably get you, get you some of that. We had to do the same thing for um. For the uh, the uh.
Yeah, cause we, we can show, we can show you what we need to replace. Uh, typically how it works, once we're allocated funding. Depending on the amount with that funding, then we engage our playground designer. Comes up with a, with a design based on the funding that we received. This way, at least we can get something built. Um, so we can more than, you know, I could definitely send you pictures of what we're looking to replace in terms of what we actually wanna put there now. I haven't engaged a designer yet, only because we don't know the amount of funding that we're gonna receive for this project. So I don't wanna come with a pie in the sky plan and then not be able to, to build it.
Okay, thank you.
We could probably give you some examples of the type of things that are out there trending.
Absolutely.
May not be what we do, but it'll be, it'll be what's trending out there in terms of the.
I appreciate that. And the two fifty is for just the materials, or is that materials and installation?
The entire project, it was material install and the, the surfacing. So when, when you uh, when you install a playground for the first time, the surfacing material. Ends up costing between eight to ten thousand dollars at the first install, because they do it at a depth of two feet. So after that, it's just maintenance, but that initial install is quite expensive to put the uh, to put the wood chips down.
The next item is uh, uh, part of uh what we've been talking about um throughout um our different divisions. And this is uh our park sustainability, and this is uh more building the infrastructure. The electrical infrastructure within our, our garages to allow for um charging um. Uh, the, the type, type of items we're electrifying. One of the things that we're gonna be electrifying. It over the next few years uh is gonna be our uh leaf blowers. And, and so we'll need that, that infrastructure for that as well. We talk about um. Um, our uh electric uh vehicles and even our hybrids um that from time to time. You know, and I've been to my car from time to time and it won't start. And so we, we need to have, and I'm driving a hybrid. So um, we, we need to build our infrastructure inside our, our garages. Our electric capacity in those garages are, it's very limited. So this is one of the things. I do see that we are also um, it's just, it's just a conversion. And we, we're also talking about uh, uh, an electric truck here as well in this uh, this particular.
This is a general question about the city getting um electric vehicles and, and having charging stations. In certain places, you're already going to have electricity there, and maybe you have to upgrade to a higher voltage or ampage. Forgive me, I'm not an electrician. Um, but do you see getting to a point where you would have to have? Like, for example, a, a Tesla charging station that has these huge sort of boxes. And I don't even know what's in them, but really it's like a generator of sorts that's creating the power for those charging stations. With, what are we gonna be doing?
Bitch of that, so um, um, what you guys are seeing now is just like really the basic minimum that we need. To start moving to start buying some electrical vehicles. So as of now, we are proposing two vehicles, one under operations, the other under parts. And try to install four to six electric chargers to be able to accommodate our existing hybrid fleet. Plus this new electrical trucks, pickup trucks. Yes, there is a plan that we are trying to define with the mayor's office about how the city will move. On sustainability and green infrastructure throughout the city. But what we probably gonna do is, we're gonna have some type of a consultancy that will be uh. Be the one that will help us to be able to identify what is the right things to do. To move towards that, what needs to be adapted and how we gonna fund it and. Wh- what are those things that we need to do? So there will be a plan towards that, but be, but that will probably gonna require some type of engagement of a consultant, maybe a study. Um, so those are, we're just taking the baby steps until, but there is still already conversations about it. Uh, but for this budget season, uh, what we have now is we just wanna try to do the minimum that we need. For this little fleet that we are planning to acquire and to accommodate the hybrid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the, the last item here is um, just a fun that. To continually fund open space fund of that.
I think you skipped one, Robert.
Yeah?
Oyster Shell.
Yeah, okay, Oyster Shell. Um, this is a ask for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is to continue, the continued work on our uh Oyster Shell master plan. So this will include uh work, uh, we have a shade structure, benches, tables. Interpretive signage and we have uh wood uh, uh gad rails. Uh, that need to be replaced and paving and fencing. So these are all the things that uh were brought up in our Oyster Shell master plan, which we get a lot of. Calls from the public uh asking us, are we gonna continue to do the things that are in the master plan? So, and we've tried to do something on an annual basis um. Because of course, you know, when you do a master plan, if you don't have the, if you don't have a way to finance your master plan, you have to do it over time. And so that's what we've been doing. Um, so this is what the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for.
Is, is Oyster Shell Park part of Betts Park?
No, this is the park that runs from the Maritime Center uh to Crescent Street to the transfer station.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yep, thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You're muted.
Jay, you're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay, um, but thank you for recognizing that I was talking, okay? I, I have a question about signage um in Oyster Shell Park. Does that fall under your purview?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Hey, signage is awful. How can we make it better?
Give us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Got awful system wide, and so one of the things we, Ken, I've been talking about is.
And, and it's part of the Norwalk, the Norwalk Valley Trail, right?
Yeah, it runs through there.
Yeah, it's, it's awful.
Yeah, it runs through there.
It needs better visibility.
Yeah, part of the um, part of the master plan was signage, a whole section on signage for Oyster Shell, so that, that's what some of this money would cover.
Oh, really?
Hmm.
So we're gonna be, see a big improvement. Okay, great.
In the last uh item um is historically open space fund that is maintained. And I'm, I'm gonna ask Ken to explain that, cause.
Thanks, Robert. So I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, this is, this is a yearly fund. Um, we don't spend money out of this fund. Um. I'm not a hundred percent sure where it goes, but it's, it's a yearly request in our capital budget and that's, that's what I know.
Can you?
Usually, it usually goes to the Conservation Commission or Inland Wetlands. They're usually the ones who spend it and um. Yeah, I guess when it comes to whether it's in the right spot, um, I think it's kind of up to Henry, the CFO, to kind of. Put it in, give it to Conservation.
Yeah.
Does anyone here know uh what the current balance is in that fund?
I, I can ask Alexis and find that out for you, Louis.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
I don't feel there was um much, right? We didn't, we tried to use some of this money. I think that we ended up using some of this money two years ago. Right? Didn't we?
Up on um Cranberry at the White Farm.
On the open space, so I, I don't think there is much, but it's something that it get allocated there on a yearly basis.
Right. You probably can't buy much open space for fifty K.
Well, we, we, we have to know what, yeah, you can't, it's not, it's not acquisition fund for sure.
It is limited on what, what that money.
Yeah.
Uh, can do. Uh, I know actually Lady Conservation, uh, I think that it has. Uh, some oversight over that money that I remember. But I believe that there, there was some usage of that money right in the past.
Yeah. It will, when land becomes available, it's good to have a little stash.
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Alexis to find out how much is in the account and what they've historically spent the money on.
Well, let us know, Brian.
What was, was the, it would try to buy the kayak thing.
So, so that's the end of our, 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 our presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
And all you other guys sat there and didn't get a chance to say anything.
Oh, they will now.
Okay.
Oh, they're up there.
All right, so what are we moving on to?
But we.
Engineering.
Engineering. Um, so that, that tab is um C one.
C one, thank you.
That's a thick one. Yeah.
So uh, thanks again. Uh, I just wanna introduce who is here uh with me. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys have a chance to met our senior engineering staff. Uh, so here at my right is Drew Valdemeyer, uh Paul Sodny, and then, then Stanton. Uh, so what I'll do, uh, unless if you guys have uh any questions about it. I'll go through uh the list, um, and if you guys, I'll keep moving if, as you can see, we have a few items. Uh, I, we are usually the longest. I know that we have a very um. Let's say uh good aggressive uh capital request this year. Uh, but I, I wanna before we go through, um, I wanna explain the reason for that. Um, we do believe that first, there is definitely an increase on the cost of doing construction. That we've been seeing all over the board. Um, we are seeing our projects coming back, I don't know, twenty-three percent more than used to be. Uh, so I just wanted you guys to take in consideration that what we had approved in the past years. Uh, even if you guys approve the same amount of money is not, we, we cannot buy this thing. Uh, the second thing that I wanna point it out is that uh our staff has been doing a very, very good job. We're becoming extremely effective on doing projects. Uh, we last year were able to really expand a lot of our paving sidewalk program. Because we have this approach of doing uh kind of in layers, the roads now. Uh, we implemented that about two years ago, where we were looking at the streets that we're gonna pave. We see what is needed in advance. We are break, we broke down in different contracts. So we go first with the utility companies, contact them. At, at the same time, we do some drainage repair that is needed. After that, we do sidewalks when we need, and I'll explain the difference between the sidewalk request that we have here. And what you guys gonna see under GMP, and then we're paving the roads. So we have been doing this for a little over two years now. What is open up a lot of roads for us to do. And also now we're identifying a lot of neighborhoods can, that can benefit for this approach. With that, we believe that we can really do more uh with the money that we are getting. Um, so that's why we're asking for more money than usual, because we are, the last two years, we have been delivering. Uh, above and beyond what we've done in the past few years. So I know it is a big number, but also I wanted to pay attention that we believe that we're gonna need a higher number for this year and next year. Uh, where we have this opportunities to really tackle the main assets that needs to be repaired. And after that, we go back to how it should be the trend in the last five years. So it is kind of a two-year investment um that we believe that is worth. And then we go back to how we used to have on a, on the eighteen, fifteen, eighteen million dollar uh budget. Okay, so I just wanna open with that. Uh, again, we'll go quick through the list and, and. Please, guys, anything that you can input will, will help. Um, so our first item are bridge repairs. Um, the bridge repairs, uh, if you remember this, the city is responsible to inspect uh all bridges that is below twenty foot span. A few years ago, we came to you, we have a study done and we raided all those bridges. Uh, and now what we do, we, we put money to fix that some of them are most covers and really bridges, but we call bridges. And also we have to redo also the design. So based on that list that our consultant put together, we are doing those repairs. Uh, unfortunately, last year, uh, we have the issue with the Rowayton Bridge, uh, that. Wasn't in one of our priorities, but due to the storm, it failed, so we have to move to repair. But we are now going down the list. Uh, so I believe that we went in front. I think, Mr. Schuman, I believe that you were, when, when we did, I think that we went for approval, that you were in one of the boards. That we had to go uh for approval of the four bridges that we are pretty much got permission to do. So this is just a continuation of that list, um, and we have the list in the supposedly. Even as the, as the back, if it is not, yeah, we are happy to send it to you because we have backup for everything. So again, with, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh this year. Um, it's always based on the list and what is the kind of improvements that we need to do. Um, the second item is the structural inspection repairs. Um, this apply to if we have a retaining wall that will fail, or if we have something that is not really related to those bridges. Uh, we have like one thing this year at Wall Street. We have uh under the sidewalk near the bottom of that bridge, we have a void. Uh, we have to engage a structural uh engineer to look at it and do a repair. So that's where that money comes from when needed. We do own some retaining wall throughout the city. Sometimes with major storms, the s- the soil gets saturated, put more pressure, there are some type of cracks. So you can see that this year we do need to do a repair, and then after that is lost down again the number, because it's just kind of a minus.
Vanessa, sorry, just to go back on the um, the first one, the four hundred for the local bridges. Do you, can you just tell us what project or projects that is, where they are?
Yes, uh, Paul, we'll, we'll tell you about the list.
Basically, we, we put together for the backup. The first year is fifty thousand for engineering design, four hundred for construction, twenty-three, four. Then four or five, it's another fifty for a design.
No, I'm sorry, not, not the amount. I can see all that, what's.
The backup for those are in the locations behind it. So three, four, we're starting off in the order of priority. It would be Field Street, Glover Avenue over Raccoon. Seaview over the Title Mill Pond, Two of Tree Lane over Stony, uh, Griss Mill over Raccoon. West Cedar Street over Keeler Brook, and then Park Street over Betts. Bonnie Brook Trail over Holy Ghost Fathers Brook. And there's a second one on that, because we're doing Bonnie Brook Road now. But the river there, Holy Ghost Fathers Brook, goes through Bonnie Brook Trail twice. So that one is twenty-three, four. Then we have another list for what would be four or five. And the recommended priority, and I could go through those, but that would be the out years. And then the following year would be to have them inspected again, because we were supposed to have them inspected. But in five years in twenty nineteen, so the sixth year would be twenty-five, six for a group of inspections again. And then we continue on with six, seven, with the recommendations we get for that study, and seven, eight, same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a list of the, it'd be an email.
Yeah, I think it's easier, I know. We don't know, we know the names of the streets, but I don't think we really know the names of the brooks.
You have to back up with your stuff?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say the names of the, it doesn't say the locations. It just says structural inspection, da, da, da. I mean, up at the top on, on the structural, it says Wall Street, but it doesn't, and then Wash- Washington Street, Wall Street. But on the previous one, it just doesn't say anything. That's, I'm just curious where they are.
The, the list for this year, what we have as, what are the ones.
Yeah, you guys have the PDF and you wanna forward to me, I'll pass along to.
Well, yeah, thank you. Oh, uh, I think that when they gave you all the documents, they never upload our um. Backup, well, we'll do it, we have a package for the backup. We're gonna just, we have the whole package for you guys. It will be.
Perfect.
Yeah, that'd be.
Be great, thank you.
They all just say the same. They all just say the same thing.
And so our next item is the West Cedar Street Bridge. This is one of those federal state projects. We're just putting a little, we already have got some money, probably enough for the bridge. We believe that we are about a hundred thousand dollars short, so that's why we put this here for some. We are, hopefully, we're gonna beat this project at the end of this year. We are waiting on permits pretty much. And the next one is the Perry Avenue Bridge Rail. We made this as a standalone project, and I'm gonna explain that why. And usually this type of thing, we could use the money on the bridge repairs. This was requests really from the neighborhood. But I just, we just want a transparency and we don't want that you I need that you guys understand that when we ask the money for bridge repairs, that money is really just addressing the deficiency that came out of that study. Although like the painting, it's more like a cosmetic thing, is not really something that is related to the structure of the bridge. And we know that the neighborhood would like us to do. So but you know, it's not just send our operations guy there with a can of paint. Unfortunately, there is some special paint that goes in because we won that last. And that's why we put as a separate project. We need a little bit of a design and all that. So it's about seventy five thousand dollars. Okay, our next one is really our paving management program. This is one of the highest items that we have for this year, and it's exactly for that reason that I explained to you guys. And we are being extremely aggressive on the roles that we want to do. And I have Drew here, Drew can tell you how much we can do with that money. And again, the good thing is that we look at this work in many, many different ways. And we are very confident that with the money, we'll be able to accomplish all that. Also, we are adding some major roads into this year budget, what makes the price higher as well. But our roles that needs to get done eventually and and low cost money. So Drew, I'll let you go.
Yeah, I'd like to to just add that a lot of this is is dependent on coordination with utilities, coordination with with each other, with sidewalks and and other infrastructure improvements that we're that we're doing. So for example, one neighborhood that we want to do is Avenues A through E. Avenues A through E have already received a new gas name throughout that neighborhood. So while the road is in disrepair from the utility who came in there in advance of us knowing that we wanted to get in there and do the repaving, we're gonna follow immediately with with some sidewalk improvements. And then immediately after that with with paving. So so the timing, the timing of some of these streets is is critical to follow up with both utility restoration and 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 sidewalk repairs. Another example is Spring Hill Avenue. Gas company has already been through there in anticipation of us doing sidewalks and then and then paving. And Alvin, Alvin and Wildwood, the water department, we know wants to do work on on those streets. And we've already done the sidewalks on on Good Row and and Osborne. And we know that the water company wants to follow follow that work before we pave to to perform their work. So immediately after they finish their work, we want to be able to follow up shortly after with with paving. And Dreamy Hollow, you know, we have a very big drainage project going on on Saddle and Friendly. There's a lot of roads in that neighborhood that need to be repaved. And and we're gonna want to follow immediately after we're finished with the construction. We anticipate finishing the construction this year. So next spring, we're gonna want to be able to get in there and immediately restore those restore those roads. So the so the timing is critical on a lot of these roads that we want to get done now.
And I just want to read to you guys some metrics that we have. So how this money is being spent? In two thousand and twenty one, we paved twenty nine roads. In twenty twenty two, we paved forty nine. Okay, so this is a fifty nine percent difference.
Sorry, Vanessa, what was the second number? I heard twenty nine, but I couldn't hear the other one.
Forty nine.
Forty nine, thank you. I guess it depends on how long and short they are.
Well, that's exactly what I was gonna say. You know, there is some small roads that ended up being adding more. But we also track by linear of foot paved. So I can give you the number, but I'll give you just in central eight miles, just that the number is smaller. So in twenty one, we paved seven point eight miles. And last year was almost ten. So that's what I'm saying. You know, we are getting more efficient with the money. And that's why we believe that we can do more and take care of all these neighborhoods that are in need. And do you guys have any questions related to paving?
Yes, and so I'm I'm always so happy to hear that you're coordinating with whether it's the water company. It seems like cable companies might be digging up streets and nothing makes me more crazy than to drive down like last year on Flax Hill Road between Scribner and Highland. They were, that was just paved, like it wasn't a whole road pavement, but it was a large section of road. And then sure enough, this past fall, they were digging up, you know, a trough, two feet or three feet wide, whatever it was. And then I'm like, how did that happen? And does a cable company, I don't know if it was the gas line or who it was, because I couldn't really figure that out. How do we prevent that from happening?
So I just want to say that we do have a two-year moratorium on the roads that we pave. We do not allow anyone to dig on our roads after that. Unless if it is an emergency. So we do not only coordinate with the water company, we do a full coordination with all the utility companies. So my staff have monthly meetings with water, gas, electrical, cable. They all come here, we present what is the plan, and they have to follow our plan. So they have to be ahead of us. Sometimes those things happen in case it is an emergency. So if there is like a water main break, we have to allow.
Obviously, that I can understand, but this was a long swath from Scribner down to Highland, and they had just so nicely repaved it. It can't have been two years. I mean, maybe it was, but it certainly didn't seem like it. And if it was two years, it was two years and a day.
So so on Slax Hill Road, we did not actually repave Flax Hill Road. What we, what we did do is we did do some pavement preservation. So we had some some sections that were that were that were considerably more horrible than others. That hit hot thermo recycling followed by a micro surface. So so those, that's not considered paving. It is a pavement preservation technique that we used. And we and we didn't do it along the entirety of Flax Hill Road. It was just at worst places. And so then what happened was the the gas company came in and did their work before before we actually repaved the road. So we didn't actually repave it. We were just we were just putting Band-Aids on on Flax Hill Road. Then the gas company came through and we collected road restoration fees from the work that the gas company did and which which allowed us to to help subsidize some of the funding that we actually put into the resurfacing of of portions of Flax Hill Road and also Soundview.
Okay, I mean, I I appreciate that, but I still think micro resurfacing or whatever terminology you use short of, you know, a full-fledged repaving, it's still spending your time and resources and taxpayer money. And the gas company, even if they give us restoration, shouldn't be able to just rip up our roads like that after you guys have spent time and energy making them better. Okay, so I would just advocate that you really watch that and just tell them no, you know, wait.
All right, it was just portions of the road that we had restored in its entirety. And and there were other portions of Flax Hill Road that I think people could attest to driving through there right before the end of last year that that fell apart extremely rapidly, quickly, not because of the gas company going through, but because of the nature of that road.
Yes, and and I I understand, and I think as somebody that drives around, I like it when you only, even if you can only do a couple hundred yards, it's sort of relief from going over a really bad road, and that's great. Just don't let the gas company come in and dig it all up again. Thank you.
So our next item is repair the existing sidewalks and curving, so sidewalks and curbs. Then I just want to explain, I know there is a lot of questions when you guys decide walks. What is the difference between the budget on GPW, the difference on GMP? As you guys saw, Rex and Parks also asked for some sidewalk money. GPW money for sidewalks is only for existing sidewalks. We do not go to areas where there are no sidewalks. So what we do, we repair existing sidewalks, and now we are closing gaps on, we're gonna do some work. But where are these areas? Again, our paving program is the lead on telling us where we're gonna go. So what we do is as soon as what we identify the rules that will be paved, we look to see if there will be a change in the curve. First, if there are sidewalks there, if there will be a change in the curve on how is the condition of those sidewalks. And that's where we ended up putting those into this program. So now before you should be all together with the same money, now we want to do the approach that we want to be ahead of it so we can be more efficient and just have a group only work on sidewalks. And that's why now it's a separate budget item. But again, because we're increasing the number of roads that we are paving, we also need to increase the amount of sidewalks. Also, connectivity is something that is very important now for the city. We're trying to improve the pedestrian mobility. So before we use just to do the sidewalks where they exist. So let's say you have on the street seven houses and sometimes only four of them have sidewalk in front of it. Before, we would go there and repair those, and that was it. Now we are giving continuity. So sometimes we not only close those gap, but maybe they are just a block away from a main arterial. So for instance, one of the projects that we're gonna start this April is where we Senga Road, that ABC area that we're gonna pave. We, with our actual budget, we identify that area as a very good area to improve sidewalks. There, we are probably doing more closing gaps than just maintaining. But we know that it's very important for that neighborhood to get to Scribner and also to Route One. So that's what we are doing. Now, we do that also in conjunction with GMP because we identify that and we ask for their input on how they want to improve that. But that funding is coming from our budget. Now, if there is a total area that we were not gonna go at all, but they want to implement new sidewalks, that is not showing our budget. That is the one that you, GMP will come and tell you. So I just want to explain the difference. So again, I have Dan Ben Obersis, the sidewalk program. He can give you an idea about what are the areas that we're planning to do with this four million that we are requesting.
And Vanessa, you use the term sidewalk and footpath equally, like one of the same?
No, we do have a footpath item separately. So when we're doing sidewalk is a full ADA compliance sidewalk.
Okay. And not footpath. I I noticed this year, a few footpaths, it felt like were repaved if you were there paving the road. And I know Jim Travers doesn't agree on this. He thinks every sidewalk should be completely five feet with a curb and everything. But if you're on an existing road and there's a footpath that's falling apart, I would back to repave the footpath.
GPW puts it back.
Okay, great.
Yeah, GPW, GMP, again, the thing is that GMP may have future plans to maybe develop a full sidewalk, accommodate the ADA. But GPW, as of now, if we go to a road, if there is an existing footpath that is not in good condition, then will be redone.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Dan, we're gonna go through quick.
Yeah, so obviously, we appreciate in previous years, the funding that you've given us on these items. It allowed us to do about four and a quarter miles last year of that. You know, four miles was replacement of curb and sidewalk, and about a quarter mile was what Vanessa indicated of closing gaps. So where there's those opportunities, we coordinate with GMP also to make sure that that we understand what the road needs to be for the safety of of the traveling public, whether that's pedestrians or bicycl- bicyclists or vehicles. So next year, and and we've started to implement this now, previous years, we bid large projects. This season, we've and and with existing funds bid, you know, smaller projects, and we've been rewarded with more bidders on those bids. And the way we word this, and when you get that backup data, you're gonna, you know, see a map. And if you have questions, there's a, sorry, I don't even know if that's gonna help. But the point is, in the upper left, there's a legend. So hopefully, it's it's pretty legible for you. You know, red being our budget request for this season, which is about four and a quarter million dollars. What that'll allow us to do is is do pre-work for the paving program, which is the ADA ramps at the intersections so people can can safely traverse our roads. We're gonna do work in the Berkeley Leonard area. If you've been there, there's there's some deteriorated curves and sidewalks in in need of of repairing in preparation for the paving program. That's another area where we've been coordinating with the utility, namely the water company, to give them the opportunity that, you know, this is the road on our list. And and we want them ahead of us just to to prevent what what Tammy is saying. The the next area on that list is Fairfield Avenue, Bayview. Again, to to what you're also talking about and seeing some of the major roads to what Vanessa indicates why we need money during this two-year period that we're doing large roads that result in in higher cost. But there's the segment of Flax Hill from Washington out to Highland, you know, that we would look to fix curving in preparation for the the paving program of that segment of the road to bring it up into a state of good repair. And and again, if if funds allow and the bids are are favorable for this, you know, we have gotten some bids back and we reevaluate our estimates based on that of what we give you. There's also Quintard, and so the the phrase that I used was areas. So if there's opportunities adjacent to that for both either connectivity or, you know, poor sections of sidewalk, and also Drew with the paving program does this. You know, we try to bring the the contractor into an area and pave adjacent streets for for the efficiency of that. So we don't want to miss those opportunities in the same way that the way the public uses the network, right? Like you fixed this street, but there's a glaring problem next door. And one instance, I don't know how familiar anyone is with the neighborhood. We were on Cottage, that was in our program. Literally standing on the corner with one of our junior engineers, and a woman was coming back from CBS. And she said, well, what about this street? And, you know, we took a look at it and and was able to add to the scope. So so your funds really result in in a positive improvement for the for the public. So we appreciate that and your consideration of of these two accounts amongst all of our others also.
So do you guys have any questions on our sidewalk program? Okay, so next item, Tammy, for you, our repair of existing footpath. Usually, we ask for two hundred thousand. We know that there feel that we're gonna, based on the rules that we're gonna be doing, proposing this year, we ask, we're asking for three hundred thousand plus advice of the astronauts side. So that's why it's three hundred. Our next item is general drainage. This money is pretty much just buy us some material all the time that we go before we know that we need to do a repair on add a catch base, some repair, some pipes. And we have an old call drainage contractor, so this money funds a little bit of that work and also the material to perform that work. We get this every year. This is a must for us. Without that, we cannot buy the material to do drainage repair. Next one, it is water course maintenance. This, the last few years has been one of the items that we have been requesting a lot of money. Last year, there was, because we're doing, we have major drainage areas that we need to mitigate. That we or did a study now or we're finalizing the design, and now some of them have to go to construction. As of now, we have Dreamy Hollow, that is a nine point four million dollar project. Last year, there was a little bit of a change at the end of the budget season because of ARPA money. So we decreased that number and we're able to secure funds from ARPA. What we did that is two point five million dollars. I know it looks like a big number, but on on drainage and construction, it is not as much money. This is probably gonna help us do two or three probably small areas that we can do that. Probably small areas that we can do, that we already did two studies. We have a little design and we can do a little bit of a project out of it. Um, and that also will free up some other roads for paving. What happened is that sometimes when it's, the project will cost about eight hundred to a million dollar. Although it's really like two or three streets that we can, that we're gonna do some work. Um, I'm not very comfortable on putting on the old call drainage. I'd rather bid as a separate project. And this is what causes that. So at uh Shatton, right, Shatton, is that the name of the?
Shatton and Costet.
Yeah, Shatton and Costet is one of the projects that we are ready, we filed for permit. Um, and we'll, yeah, we, we will just send it and this is probably, this money will fund that project. Then also we're changing the outfall and we'll clear up that whole area for paving uh in our future forecast. Um. Our next one is just dredging and marinas. We have that item every year. We, we have obligation, but we didn't got. A letter saying that we need to dredge anything, so we zero for this year.
So that, when, I'm sorry, just to go back to, cause I meant to ask that of Ken Hughes with the Vets Park with the dock. So there won't need to be any dredging there in order to redo that dock?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, stormwater managed plan. This issue being in compliance with our M S four. Um, we, right, stormwater management. So what happened is that, again, we have been asking for. Few years, we never got the money. Last year we were able to finance through uh ARPA money. Um, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. To really be able to engage a consultant company to help us meet our permit. We are not meeting our M S four permit as of today. Um, we know that out of, of this study, we'll need to have to take some actions. Uh, then we do not know exactly what will be the cost of it. So we're trying to just start building uh some capital funding for those resources. So we have eight fifty-four that we're gonna spend on design and maybe some of the low hanging fruit. And then we have to start putting money in. So we're just being a little conservative, two hundred thousand dollars uh for this account. Um.
Could you please remind us what M S four means?
Clean water.
Compliance, what is that?
Uh, it's for, it's for clean water, um, to, to help improve uh. Clean water through, through town.
So the M S four is.
State mandated thing? It's a state requirement?
It is, it is actually a Connecticut G E P requirement, yes.
Thank you.
Um, next item um is the normal flood control. Uh, we usually, they are required us to do a few things. Uh, we haven't heard from them. We, we are waiting, so we, again, we zeroed the request for this year when something comes up or ask for money. Um. Goals to resilience is one of the hot topics. We really need to do something related to that. But through conservation and also through our, we do have some funding there. Um, again, we are not asking for any capital money yet because we do not know exactly what we're gonna be funding. Uh, we use as a placeholder for the following years. Um. The New Jane and Avenue Pumps, Avenue Storm Drainage, this now is one of. The biggest, the next biggest project that we need to do after Dreamy Hollow. As of now, the study shown that we need about a ten million dollar uh project. Um. And that's exactly where that basket, baseball field will go, then recreation center park is going. So what we're trying to do here is depending on what is needed should done. That be done in the area where the baseball field will be done. It will come from Rex and Parks funding. That's why there is that extra money requesting there. And then we'll do the. Other part that is beyond the park with seven million. So that's the request. Um. The, we do not know exactly when we're gonna start that project, but this is something that we will have to do. It's our next biggest drainage project. So Dreamy Hollow will finish this year and just so you guys have an idea, was nine point four as of today. This watershed is a little bit big.
Can you clarify, when you're talking about Dreamy Hollow, are you talking about Dreamy Hollow Road or the condo complex Dreamy Hollow on County Street?
Uh, it's, it's on Saddle Road, Friendly Road. Um, we've got.
Okay, that whole area you're considering Dreamy Hollow. North of, north of Westport Avenue.
Yeah, that's the name of our project. When we had our study done, it was, it was in the vicinity of Dreamy Hollow. That's how we acquired the name.
Okay, so I wasn't too far on. Thank you.
Um. Okay, can I move on?
Hmm.
Next one, Heather Lane. I would say that if besides that uh. Storm drainage, two point five million, the six hundred thousand that we always made. I would say that on drainage, this would be one of our top priorities on drainage, okay? The reason for that is that this area really. Suffers a lot during major storms. Uh, about ten years ago, we did a project in that area on Lockwood Avenue. That we took care of the downstream up to the outfall uh East Avenue here. This is the upstream of that portion. They do struggle during major storms. The good thing about this, we have a study, we have a design that is almost finalized. We just need to, the money to be able to break ground as early as uh summer. So the good thing about, I know it is four million dollars, but we, a lot of. Properties will benefit from this. Uh, so. I know that some areas we have a lot of flooding issues, but sometimes we have to put ten million dollars. And because the parcels, the lots are bigger, uh, the number of parcels are not as high. This area is, there is more, there is more density, the help, the parcels are smaller. And we're gonna really be able to help a lot of homeowners. So I think that will be a major, major investment for the city if we can do that. Because we did one project as, let's say, as a phase one ten years ago. So I think that it's about time that we, we continue this. Glenbening Street and Cannon Street. Um, again, this was something that we already asked for a study, the study came out. Um, there are some improvements that we can do on that area. We need to move the study to design. That's why we're asking for three eighty-five. So we can design that so in the future years, we can make the project that will be on today's money about two point five million. So the money would be to uh, to fund design. Um. Lawrence Street Storm Drainage Pump Station Upgrade. Um. This area, um, it is. An area that does have some flooding uh due to some um tide. Um. What is the right term? Influence, thank you.
Can you remind me where Lawrence Street is, please?
Up on Meadow Street, between Woodward. Between Woodward and.
Okay, oh, right, right. Thank you. Thank you.
So uh, the neighborhood there, I think that many, many years ago, they came here and asked for some type of a project. Should be done, it was done about eight years, ten years ago. Thirteen years ago. Um, pretty much what needs to be done there is. We have to add a new pump station and probably do a pressurize pipe uh through Lawrence Street. So even when the tide comes up and during a rainy event, we'll be able to push that water. I have to say that. I know that that will really get flooded, but we do not get much water into the properties. Most of the water stays on the road. What is not ideal also, but you know, when you guys considering. Um, if, if what you have to prioritize, uh, we do believe that we can, this is a good project to do. It will be, uh, there will be some costs associated to it. And as I said, Heather Lane, we are really directly benefiting the homeowners. This one, first, we're gonna reduce amount of water on the street. But we haven't received as many complaints about property that got damaged with the water. Doesn't mean that it doesn't need to get done, but that's why we're spreading. Uh, now as we have to do a refresh on the study to see if the study that was done eighteen years ago. Now still gonna be with the same conditions and really a pump station will need to be uh the best solution for that area. And then move to design and then in the future to construction. So I just wanna point that out and the request is here. And another area is Glenwood, we are also, we're still doing some uh study. We do not know what that study will bring to us, uh, but we believe next year we may need a design. So nothing for this year, but as a placeholder for design the following year.
And Vanessa, are all of the designs done in-house?
No.
No.
They are very small. Uh, one of the reasons, Tammy, it is, I don't have enough staff, I'll be honest. We have, again, to be able to run all these projects. We have been working all the time that I tell these guys, I have another project, you know, they are like rolling their eyes and I'm kidding. You know, we're like, we have, we have been extremely busy. Um, so it is, we, we ended up giving, uh, and, and there are companies there that only do that. And also with the permitting, a lot of them, if there is some outfall that needs to be repaired. They are able to get the permit in and out quicker than we do because they are doing that every single day. So that's why we're usually using our consultant.
Vanessa, have you uh? Uh, both in this, in this area uh and in other areas where you do, particularly where you do studies or. Or do some uh maintenance work. Uh, have you ever done an analysis to determine whether it would be less expensive? If you had more staff uh and could do more of this work yourself? Rather than uh hiring outside consultants to do it?
Yes, many times, Mr. Schuman. Uh, uh, particularly because our Public Works Committee asked us that question. Uh, I would say every quarter pretty much, uh, because we do, sometimes we have to outsource few things. So there are two things that, that happen. Sometimes if we have a full-time position person, um, we ended up, may have now a lot of work for them to do, right? So we can see the trend that we are busy last year. We are busy this year, we're probably gonna be busy for the next couple of years. But reality is that recession is really knocking the door. Uh, probably all those grants will not gonna be here and then we're probably gonna go dry again on construction. So then we're gonna have now a full-time person that we're probably gonna need for a period of two, three years. But now we, we have them uh on staff all the time. So this is one thing where we, we have the consultant or sometimes an inspector. And unfortunately, I don't wanna use that term, but we use as convenient. Uh, the second thing is that now it is almost impossible to hire new people. Um, particularly on the public sector. Uh, the market is so hot. That everybody is bidding for engineers all over and our salaries without the pension, we do not offer pension anymore. It has been very, very hard to be able to acquire people with uh enough knowledge to do this project. So probably what we ended up doing would be having a very junior entry level engineer. That who are not gonna be able to design this.
Thank you.
So. Next one is tree planting. Um, we are not asking for any money on tree planting. But the good news is that we got eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on grants and ARPA money. Um, we, we had a record of tree planting last, this year. Over four hundred trees we planted this year. So we do have enough money to continue. We have to spend our ARPA funds by end of next year. So that's why we're zero for this year. And then we're just putting a little bit to carry us over after our ARPA funds uh go through the following year. But it's zero, but I just wanna be on record that we are planting more than ever. Um. East Avenue roadway and bridge reconstruction, this is an obligation that we have to fulfill with D O T. Uh, we already signed commitments with the East Avenue project. This is pretty much our share of the underground utilities of the project that is going on. And all the utility and service, so. Uh, this is the money that is already committed to go is pretty much coming in the account on July first, July second, we pay the bill.
Uh, how much longer is the D O T project expected to, to take?
Where?
On East Avenue.
Um, that project has two layers, so um, it will be, I'm sorry, a long answer. So that project is divided in three. So what is happening now is what we call the advanced utility project where we're undergrounding. Uh, we are building the infrastructure to be able to underground all that. That one will take another year to, year and a half to be completed. After that, they're gonna start doing. That may change depending on their schedule, but as of today, tomorrow may be different. They're gonna probably start the widening of the road south of the bridge. Uh, so they have to do some drainage improvements there and that probably will take uh probably a good year. And only may starting the fall, but that is not uh a hundred percent yet. After that, they need to do the bridge, the replacement of the bridge needs to be done. Because the abutments, that, that road will get wider north of the bridge. So they need to do the bridge and then the last piece will be to wind everything uh, uh, tomorrow. So probably there is still be a good four to six years of work on East Avenue. But I cannot tell that will be continuous because there is. They can only do the bridge when they also do the walk bridge. Because they have to change the same side of the tracks at the same time. So that is really um one point that really ties up their schedule. So those are the sequence as of today. They may change the widening a little bit, but that's all the work that needs to happen there. And that's how they're planning to do as of today.
Vanessa, when you're saying the bridge, you, you referring to the train bridge, not the I ninety-five bridge, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. I ninety-five, we're not, we don't, we haven't received any plans that that bridge will be replaced.
Okay. Can you just tell us as a slight aside, what is the state doing right there by the on-ramp going south? Is it park, is it a park and ride? What are they doing right there?
It is what they call the I ninety-five median project. Uh, so that project uh is two things there, really getting rid of the median on I ninety-five. Between exit sixteen and exit. Uh, exit seventeen in Westport. And that project also replaced one of the bridges on I ninety-five already in West. What you guys see is one thing that the. Sound uh people ask for the wa- uh. The water quality people ask, what happened was that all the drainage from I ninety-five as of today. Is really goes straight to the normal grid. So for many, many years, uh, there was a, a lot of requests to D O T to do something about it. So what they are doing now, they are improving the water quality, uh, pretty much putting kind of alcohol a pool. Uh, to improve the water quality, where is the parking lot, right on exit sixteen? So have to be able to build that is, that's why they're going so deep. They're gonna really make like some type of storage there and then the outfall when that up going to the river, what will improve the quality of the water. Um, so what, that's why. But the main project is really the median, but we got that as part of all that request. Another thing good that came for the city. Cause I know that a lot of people sometimes are concerned about it. They think that, oh, they cut the trees, but it's really for a good reason. We're gonna get um more trees. There is a whole landscape uh project that we, they are improving. Uh, it will be better for water quality. And uh, another thing also, uh, that we have a trail that runs parallel to East Avenue along the river. And we were able to ask them to really tie that trail to the parking lot. So now if you wanna come to the parking lot, you're gonna be able to park your car there, your bike and bike through the trail. Because the trail will finish at the commuter lot.
Oh, thank you. And how long is that anticipated to take?
Uh, our portion should not take much longer, to be honest. That's why we're seeing all this construction. Yeah, so within a year, they should be out of Norwalk, but I ninety-five, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look good because we need to shift traffic out of Norwalk to the other side. They need to replace the bridge. So, I believe that the whole time of this project is about three years.
Thank you. I love the updates. Thank you. I was very sad they cut down all the oak trees on the northbound exit, it's exit sixteen, very.
I know. A lot of people were, and we have, uh, many, many meetings with them. And is that they are listening, uh, to us and they really revisit their original plan and now they came with, uh, they are still working on and we are working with them to have a much, much better landscape plan than the original one that they proposed.
I was wondering about that this weekend too, uh, last weekend, Tammy. I thought they were expanding the road, they were creating another lane. I mean, everything looks so bare.
I know. It's really, it really bothers me.
One of the reasons, just saying, uh, one of the reasons that they had to take the trees down is because where they're gonna put the stormwater infiltration system to allow water to infiltrate into the ground and also reduce the quantity of runoff into the river is where the trees were, so the trees would have clogged the drainage system. There would have been no way to accomplish both items in there right away. And when they did it, they did it in DOT right away, not at city property.
Right. What about on the other side though, Mike? Yeah, on the, on the south side of I ninety-five at the exit. There were four huge trees.
Except for Incident Management System they're putting in on that side too as part of this whole, this whole project is a hundred and three million dollar project, a state project.
Yeah, it's also, it will improve also the, the ramp tracks at sixteen. There is a lot of accidents there, that's what they're doing, that should improve that.
Okay.
There is also a website, uh, and again, if you guys have, um, all state projects, the major ones, they have their own website and they have their own public outreach. So, sometimes if there is a specific question, you can email them and they will get back to you right away as well. Sometimes we do not know the answer and we do the same, so I just wanna put it there.
That's great.
Which has it there, I ninety-five median project has it.
Thank you.
And my next item is the Grand Local Mentions Funds. We usually ask for that every year, uh, we're asking for a flat for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This cover what the state projects will not gonna cover in some of the projects. So, I'll use the I ninety-five median project as an example, not, not that it's happening. But let's say that, uh, we ask them to add, I don't know, more trees or different type of guard rail that is really not part of that project. They would be willing to do if we financially participate on that sometimes. So, that's when we use those funds. So, sometimes we wanna do something a little bit different that is not their standard, but we think that will be beneficial to the city. We use these funds to be able to help them to agree with us. Um, infrastructure investment, kind of is a capital reserve. We, I'll be honest, there is no way that we can do anything this year. We are very busy, so we don't need this one. Same with the next one, that is the Right-of-Use Policy Study. Something that we have to eventually start looking at it. We are too busy to, to study anything related to that. The State Project Non-Participating City Standard amenities, we're zero this year because we don't see one of those projects related to this type of funding that will happen this coming year. Um, so we are not asking for any money this, this year. Um, Elizabeth Street, Streetscape and Underground Utility Project. Um, EverSource, uh, in order to move their transmission lines, they're gonna go through Elizabeth Street. And you guys know about that, that would come out of the police headquarters, go through Elizabeth Street and then pass through it. So, the city would like to use that opportunity to do the same that we're doing on East Avenue. Uh, we want underground all the utilities there and really work on the streets here. And as part of the EverSource relocation line, uh, they are giving some money to relocate part of that, uh, infrastructure. But we need a design for that and eventually we need to pick up on things that they're not gonna cover. So, it will be the Streetscape, maybe the pavers and all that. So, we are putting, we got a little bit of money last year. We have an RFP out, um, which engage a consultant to be able to do the design. Um, we put a hundred thousand that we believe that we may need to finalize this design and then we're gonna move into construction.
How long would that project take?
Um, I, it, we're gonna do it with EverSource. So, I do not know when they're gonna start because they are working on permits. So, they have to file their permit. After that, probably that is one of the first areas that they're gonna do because they need to bring the line up to there. As soon as they are done there, we're gonna, that's why we need the design ready. Um, because I would say that probably the earliest that they would break ground would be probably next, a year from now. So, this gave us this whole year to have our design ready.
Thank you.
Uh, the conversion of aerial to underground utilities. Again, uh, one of the reasons why we're not asking for funds this year is that we cannot handle, uh, another project, but the idea is to, the same thing that we did at Elizabeth Street and on East Avenue. Would like to start seeing opportunities when we're paving, doing sidewalks in some neighborhoods. Maybe add another layer now to start undergrounding some utilities on some major roads. So, we have to start building and create this program, so we're gonna put some funds for that.
That's great.
Last one, green infrastructure. Again, this is combined with the whole sustainability that the department is supporting. But we do have money for green infrastructure through ARPA funds. So, this year we don't need it, uh, but on the next year, you guys may have seen some requests. Um, so you know about our green infrastructure, since I have, it's the last one and I can, you can brag about it. Uh, we're doing a project at, uh, Caff Pasher Beach because we had to repave that lot for rags and parks. It is their money, but we are using, uh, green infrastructure there also to improve the water quality and, and minimize a little bit of the runoff. So, we're under construction now, uh, we should have it open by Memorial Day. So, again, that's our list. Uh, we are here happy to answer any questions, any information, anyone about any projects. Please.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I, I would say that, uh, this format for, um, presenting this material and responding to our questions, uh, really, I, I believe it's worked very well. I thank you for that.
I appreciate all your support. Again, we, we are really very happy to work here. And again, without your support and without the funding, we really cannot shine. You know, it is really because of you guys supporting and believing on the funds that we ask for that we're able, uh, to do this type of work. So, we, me and all my staff really appreciate everything that you guys do for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And to Vanessa, you have somewhere on the city website, I believe, a list of roads that are, you know, in the queue for repaving, right? Can the residents find that?
Tammy, and I'll tell you, as part of one thing that we wanna, that we revamped this year, and I'll explain that, we took the list out because with all the changes that happens in Norwalk, uh, a lot of the times that list keeps changing, that is beyond our control, right? We don't want the gas company to come and dig the road right after we pave. And sometimes, more than we meet with them, they do not play it as good as we do, right? Uh, other things happen. So, for instance, sometimes a state project that we know about it, sometimes a parcel got sold and now this big development will come and he has to do some work. So, one thing that we realized with all these coming changes, it's very hard to stick to a five-year forecast. We, we have been criticized of not keeping up with the list. You know, we have very good intentions on the list when we make it, but we are very good on keep our first, second, and maybe towards our third year. The fourth and fifth was really falling to the cracks because of other things that were happening in the city. So, what we did is here, again, it's a new approach. We took the list off, we sit down in this room for hours, hours, like two or three days of six, seven hours and we brainstorm considering all the information that we had, meaning state projects, developers, utility plans, budget, what, what can we do? And we developed a three-year, uh, forecast instead of five. And that's why our budget request is so high because we know what we can definitely do in the next three years and how that will fall in place with everything else that has happened. We are, we have a little bit of a concern to publish that list yet because now that list is really attached to funding. So, if we do not get nine point four million dollars, whatever we listed for twenty-three, twenty-four will change. And I don't wanna be criticized again, oh, I have my street at this year, but now, I don't know, we've got cut back to six million and now we have to make. So, we're gonna publish that list, uh, as soon as we have a better idea about the budget. But one thing that we did last year, now we have kind of a live map about what we are definitely proposing to pave on this calendar year and we mark what we have been paved as we move forward. So, we have that in our website. So, as soon as we finalize the list, we have that under contract and it's not even more a list, it's a map. We think that, we believe that if people visualize it's better, so you will see where we're gonna, more or less, so we're gonna go to this area first, that area second, and this area third. And as soon as we start paving those roads, we go back and we highlight what is done. So, that is, we have it from last year that is already, uh, uh, in our website and probably, uh, around early April, we should have the list for this calendar year up again. And hopefully, the three-year forecast.
Glad I asked. Thank you. Better to, oh, uh, under-promise and over-deliver.
Exactly. You know, and that's what was happening, you know, and, and it's terrible to not deliver, you know, we feel bad. Because, you know, if I was a homeowner, I had all, we created all that expectation and some people really get frustrated and think that they weren't supposed to decide. So, this way, we are just trying to keep the expectations low and be more realistic of what we can do.
That's great. And I mean, it really, new paving makes a neighborhood feel better and look better and it, it improves sort of the quality, if you will, um, so it's good.
And also, uh, so you guys know, uh, how better we are doing. Um, after we paved, also we let GMP know because they are responsible for the paving markings now, right? It's under them. So, they are the ones that go and they know, uh, okay, maybe we can move a little bit the curb on this street and we can fit a bike lane throughout. So, that happened in a couple of roads last year that we did that coordination. Um, so again, we are doing a much more holistic approach to, to our whole paving program, really to improve mobility and connectivity throughout the city.
Great. Thank you.
No, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I'll switch. Okay, very good.
I'll send it to you in the morning. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Brian, you still there?
I am.
All right. You're a trooper.
I think that went a lot better than years, like past years. I didn't know.
Oh, I think the process.
Really good. Well, they're, you're getting the hang of how to do it and projections and stuff, so. The numbers are getting bigger and bigger, you know, it's like by the twenty-five thousand dollars, now it's by the hundred thousand and the millions. But anyway.
Brian, will you give us, uh, send out, um, the, uh, agenda for our next meeting?
Yep, I'll have that published tomorrow. I'll get that out to you. I'll probably do both of them since there's the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth, so I'll send those both out.
Right. I like the format that you did and was very easy to follow. I went in the book and I just pulled out the, the different, um, sections.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And then they're gonna email us more of that, those details, right?
Yep, I think Ken's gonna get us some stuff on some park ideas and then they're gonna send a, uh, DPW engineer and I'll send us the backup stuff and then I'll talk to Alexis about the Open Space Fund.
Okay.
Good.
Well, thank you. All right, are we, are we done?
Everyone.
So, we're gonna need the five thirty. Five thirty on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth.
Right.
Right.
Twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth.
Right. And this, the, Ford event will be the big one, but DPW is a huge one, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody.
All right, all. Good night.
What's left of it.